So, first item on the agenda is called the order. So, welcome to everyone, recording. Welcome everyone to the Monday, July the fifth, meeting of the Community Development Committee. Our next order of business on our agenda, the agenda, or are there any changes to the agenda order? So, my new move on the second group, move like that was okay, number Chris Ward, all in paper for the present. Good, moving on to number three, which is the full disclosure of community area interests or general nature thereof. Do you have any clear say here? Hearing none, along to business arising from the previous committee meeting minutes. If there are any, all this around the room. Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Good, so moving on to number five, which is delegation patients. I would welcome Mayor Seo and the manager of the Economic Development Department at the United Counties and Leagues in Brentford. Sorry, on my agenda, I have, I have, sorry, I must be looking, I must be looking. Alright, so you being a, sorry, thanks for catching that. Yep, that's why I was asking, because I thought we had switched on. Alright, so I guess then we're starting with item A, which would be comments on zoning bylaw from the delegation by Brent. So, welcome Brent.
Thank you.
You can stand through grass if, take them, the basketball shot. Yeah, and Brent, just before we begin, we'll keep comments for your presentation to ten minutes or less. And then the committee may very well have a round of questions or more makes and comments. We'll come there, okay?
Then, you want to put use of the board? Welcome, Brent. First of all, I'd like to give you a little bit of history. I'm used to this, I better tell you, I'll put the bar really low, so it's gonna be alright. I'm not a Republican speaker. Okay, April two thousand and four, I bought a house out of empty lot, the summer, that summer, the lot, which was referred to as Generation All Family Airroom, the owners in the Trust That Journal was booked for sale all summer, but did not sell. In the years after, the property was neglected, other than it was lent to family acquaintances, the large elderly and handicapped parties. A witness to provincial park management threatened to call the police as part of your state upswarming of Ron and some other girls out. Around two thousand and ten, other neighbors or other provincial park campers were called the township to prevent the family. The owners of the, of the empty lot asked them to allow their RVs on my property and to supply them with a water source to get around the bylaw. I supplied them with water for a summer, but I did not allow the campers on my property. In the following years, neighbors or other campers stopped calling or not allowed to call the township because they did not reside there. So, the campers came back. Two thousand and fourteen. So, in two thousand and fourteen, I made my first complaint to the bylaw officer and told the owner that I was going to do it. They stayed on the site that summer and did not leave until after Labor Day, even though they were charged, they refused to leave. At that time, I was told the township had received numerous complaints and a formal letter had been sent out in two thousand and eleven, letting the mayor break into bylaw. Two thousand and fifteen, their defense failed and were convicted. In two thousand and sixteen, their appeal failed and was dismissed. Later on, two thousand and sixteen September, the owner went before town council with a vexous frivolous lawsuit. Around this time, the owner lawsuit harassed the town hall, demanding they sign fictitious documents. Then, you know, I didn't have much trouble until August ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Campers arrived in my properties for a few minutes, or a few minutes before five P M on a holiday weekend, thinking the town hall would probably close. But I called Deborah and she was still there, I asked Deborah, did the bylaw change? She said, no, I said, well, it's been a long time, Deborah, let's see if they behave properly. Well, it was a terrible weekend, again, half a dozen trailers, a dozen tents, you know, just like that. So anyways, I don't know what really happened, I know the property changed names around that time. And then August third, two thousand and twenty, the campers came back again, I called the bylaw officer. And after all, the property owner claims that he did not know that this bylaw was in effect by the Trust That Journal article. He did not know that he wasn't supposed to be doing that. This goes to his credibility or lack thereof. A matter of concern then on your website, and I know you guys are trying to tease a little bit, it says, um, "Caring for the Park is not allowed to prohibit occasions, stays, and RV or family or friends." My question is, how many RVs and tents will be allowed on the property? How long will the stay be allowed? And how do you know they're not rent gifts? I think there's many loopholes in this enforcement nightmare. In my opinion, your mission on this board is a difficult concerning bylaw RV, to find a solution for a problem that does not exist. I'm not privy to the data, but I think one person has been fined two hundred dollars in the last two, twenty years concerning RV bylaw. In that case, concern the chronic disregard for bylaw that I'm going through. You would never know, reading this by the local print and social media, of all the big news, spin, omission of facts, and other side of the story missing. These facts are obviously being employed to support a narrative that the neighbors are vexed, the councilor are power hungry, the deputy mayor cannot be trusted, and the mayor is pure evil. Examples of inflation, kids sleeping in the backyard, special occasions, family reunions, wedding. Public shelter for family breakups, financial hardships. Grouping men with the same category as a half a dozen campers, the same number of tents, camping all summer, or minimum weekends on a dirty drunken encampment. We're called the rural township, there are many areas where camping makes sense, if you have solar freedom, feet of frontage, and acreage will not impact all of it. Iron airlock and when three neighbors to the east have seventy-five lots, lots, it does not work here. So I hope this group can craft a bylaw to allow circumstances with the extreme number of RV extremists to come down. I would think there's only probably ten extreme extremists or V's. There's about seventy-two hundred people in the township, I don't think you can get thirty-six hundred to vote for camping in the backyard. But the savvy politicians, I think ignore what the majority, the side of majority wants. Please unmute council with the full facts so they can inform the citizens of what's really going on behind the smoking, mirrors, and light, and don't allow our township to be called Edwardsburg Cardinal, the end township. Um, there's one thing I wanted to mention that the judge said, the one that owed the appeal. And he said, or she said, when this law laws such as this one are important, you can hear role members of our communities are able to rely on rules that both prohibit and proclaim, or sorry, sorry, and permit certain activities or use of properties, so that everybody can enjoy their property. Also, how much, do you want to tell me how much time I have?
Uh, three minutes thirty.
And prioritize things that, there's a, you know, a lot of things that were thrown into the hiring taxpayers. Uh, you know, who's not a taxpayer here? But I do know that they got, they put, bullied the provincial park to excavate the property, their property runs along, to perform, to perform a survey and put a fence up. And then, um, as I have a letter I sent to them fourteen years ago, they told me there was a real steal property from the, the provincial park, which I believe they ended up doing. It's incredible waste of time with resort, and resorts of town hall, you guys have owned this for years. Is it really support time and a waste of hiring a lawyer by the township? I think that's about it for me, uh, there's a few things I've kind of decided maybe I shouldn't say at this point, but I might do it in your report till later.
Okay, thanks Brent. Questions for Brent on his presentation that relate back to comments about zoning bylaw review or the new zoning bylaws in the forward, not to, um, specific, possibly ongoing circumstances around, but let's keep it very specific, you guys are zoning bylaw related. And now Brent's on the, Brent's presentation relates back to that. Clear, Colonel? No specific?
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, I do, I do have a specific question. My specific question is, can I correct it, um, just from what I've heard? There is a provincial park, someone, and then to the east of that, there is a lot that is empty. Is that the lot you're referring to?
Yes.
And from that lot, where is your property?
The next part of the old town is.
Thank you so much, that's, that's all I.
So, um, Councilor, or Councilor Bill also? Hold on for a minute.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's hard, we've been having lots of conversations, it's, 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 there is a balance of, of, you know, having a law in place, it's, you know, enforceable, but doesn't need to be enforced if it's occasional use. Conversations we've got, we've been several hours in this discussion, right? And, uh, I believe we're, we're, we're struggling to do, to be perfectly honest. You know, it is good to get the flavor of your conversation, and maybe here as well, um, and, you know, that, you know, I, I really hope that we have a way to, when it's required, get them to enforce something like this. And it sounds like there's some challenges as well, so. I don't have a question, I just, just want to, you know, you appreciate that conversation for sure, and, uh, you know, I, I think that's where we're having public conversation, try to see if there's some idea that came of that and helping to figure out how to have it enforced.
Well, one result is what you guys had before, that it was only once somebody complained. Uh, you know, you know, I understand why that is now, so that little kids can camp in the backyard and everything else, but. So that's it, and like now, it's sort of changing, because I think the numbers are, what you guys, or I don't know, maybe, you know, it's a very few number, uh, that, you know, that are really doing this, I think anyways, but I, I don't see a whole bunch of them around the township. So.
So, just you remember, and I would think other companies, um, you know, I would like to as well, because we could help.
Thanks very much for your presentation, thank you very much.
Chair.
Brent, when you just made your, what is your civic number for the House unit?
Twenty-two thirty-three, I will two.
Twenty-two thirty-three, and we're all two. Okay, so I'd like to thank you for your presentation, because it solidifies a lot of things in my mind. Uh, I don't have a lot of problem, uh, with this issue, because I think it's really white and cold, black and white. And, and the reason I say that is because the bylaw that we craft hasn't been enforceable. And the only way we can, in my opinion, make it enforceable is by just prohibiting it, period. And then, if somebody brings a camper in for a weekend and the kids sleep in it, nobody complains, no problem. But in situations like yours, we have to have the power back, and we have to have the power enforcement. So I really appreciate you going through the litany of things that we've gone through since two thousand and four. It's really solidified, solidified things for me, and, uh, I, I have one more question. As a result of all the goings on back and forth, and I don't follow social media that much, but do you get any expressions of support from, uh, other people with, uh, a right-minded thoughts, fears?
Well, well, to tell you the truth, I'm not on social media, uh, I went to a friend's place and, you know, they told me, I spent about an hour jotting some things down that were said. Uh, even today, uh, I've got a phone call from our friend who said, uh, that the comments, you know, the law just mentioned about how you guys accusing a little bit, they want a month, like, you know, whatever, like, they want to be able to stay a month, not a night. So it's, they're not, you guys aren't listening to them, we gotta do this, we gotta do this, you know, so. But as far as like, I know that you went on there, I read at one point, you got pounded.
And that's all part of the game too, you know, I mean, don't worry about that.
Yeah, so, but obviously you're very thick-skinned, you're a politician to begin with, but, um, but I wouldn't go on there myself. And I don't, anyone that said anything when I went through it, said anything was a little bit logical or, they get shut down. And if you guys, all of a sudden, they're post, kind of disappeared. So I think somebody's, uh, forming off, well, they said something a little bit logical, but there's gotta be more to it than three nights staying there a year. Because they don't see the history, well, they wouldn't leave. Yeah, you know, thanks very much. Well, and that's it, like, I don't know how you guys can get that in there, but I guess in these open houses, when you get hit by, you know, all these people thinking that it's really as bad as they're saying on that website, you can tell them, tell us something.
And we've asked our staff to make sure that when we get to these open houses, that there be a, a very firm, uh, uh, explanation of exactly what it is we're trying to achieve. So, I, you know, sometimes the reading of a bylaw does lead to some ambiguity. And anytime the reading of a bylaw leads to ambiguity, you're gonna have all the enforcement to confront. So you have to be firm in your wording of the bylaw, and then soft in your, uh, in your approach to enforcement. Not many ways to have it mildly.
Seems all good.
Just better. Sounds right. Um, I agree with most of what you said, Sam. I was there when I came from front of world and it was long since they've out, you know, that it's the first of the, stop and that it was going on, I think it was pretty successful all the way through, the, the, often, some people want to exemplify their roles, you know, and that, like. Uh, I do think our, the way we are going to go right now, being, uh, on the council, both of us for a number of years here, we learn the, in terms of what planners are saying and and their writing, and sometimes some of our people don't read between the lines, that's true, that's how it did. And there's that study, a certain way to be enforced, I think maybe we need to add, add on explanation or something, more common language, saying what our actual goal is, or we can't have people complaining that yourself, unfulfill their things, but nobody's had enough to take here, but I hope it stops. Kids from the live season in the camp overnight, you say, your house, your, your daughter coming home from a calendar, or Winnipeg, was on the place, saying there were two trailers beside the house, or some.
Or a special event, you guys probably have a permit for a special event, you know, like a wedding.
It doesn't matter, they're, we're always wanna, we're not gonna be saddened by anybody. No, I've never been in council yet, to say that we're satisfied, I don't accept, uh, from the people, if you're gonna do what we think is best.
Oh, I would say that I think the primary residents should, uh, you know, supersede recreational park. You know, they can go home, they're privileged, you know, they've announced they have homes. You know what, I can't, I can't pick up and pack up and go.
What are your thoughts?
Well, I guess, I'm not totally sure how to direct this, um, but I guess it's just a, maybe a question for the township. Are there any noise bylaws in place that could help, uh, protect from these types of situations? And then, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess if there is, with the O B P, if it's after hours, we file along with the O B P, be able to help.
Awesome, I just wanted to mention, it's not just noise, it's people walking around, urinating. I'll tell, I'll, I'll say one story, and it's not a nice story. Uh, my friend and I were at the street court one time, and suddenly somebody was in distress. Looked through the hedge with a flashlight, there's a guy with his pants down all the way, his girlfriend, I think, standing beside him. He was defecating and throwing up at the same time. Like, I don't, even a bar, I don't, you don't have to put up with that.
No, but again, is there not something in the criminal code to protect against stuff like that as well? I, I'm not, I'm not trying to discredit anything you say, but, I mean, it's more like, I get the frustration and, you know, maybe there's some more, some more avenues that you're not pointing out that you need to go, need to go down.
Well, I just hope that you guys can do something about it, because I've, I've tried to have, uh, you know, patience with them, patient diplomacy, and any kind of diplomacy with them, they just run right over. And now I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to talk about my personal thing, but, I'm pretty rough though.
So I have.
Fine, I have no comment. Any final? Something to say?
I'm gonna, I, I, yeah, I just want, want, thank you very much. And just catching tonight in cards, those of motion, uh, maybe you'll be happy.
Well, actually, I'd love to, but I think the, that's why they put me ahead, I can work it.
That's fine, you can get it on later, later, don't worry about it.
Okay.
Everybody sounds fine. Thank you so much. Thanks for your presentation, glad to have you on, it's, it's good to be here, uh, from someone who lives close to, um, vacant, vacant lots, it's, uh, lots that are owned that are currently used for residential use that are in use for other purposes, so. It's good to have some of those landlords near, near those areas, so.
Thank you, you guys are all very reasonable people, I, sorry, I don't know a lot of the politics, um, I don't know who the other councillors are. Hopefully they're very much like you, but I just saw that in the, in the website where seeing that you guys were kind of accusing a little bit, and probably one thing they're gonna try to stay there, you know, forever, if they put a house there. But just have camera after camera after camera, so. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thanks Brent. Alright, moving on to the zoning bylaw. E, so, did you have it? Now, did you see any, uh, mayor?
Well, I'm just, I'm just, and then, uh, this is just gonna be a very quick review for the committee of our, here we are with the Ontario Job Site Challenge. It's gonna be a lot of history and kind of bringing us to date, and Claire was said at the present time. I'll be very quick with the PowerPoint, and then a couple of, uh, short videos to show. So, that way, if you see me tap my screen on my level lot.
Just.
So, what, and so, very quickly? But, so, we had, uh, a couple, a couple of ideas about with Newmark, and the Newmark is the, um, the, the international site selected that's been hired by the province of Ontario to help them select the three job sites in the Ontario Job Site Challenge. All we know is that there was around eighteen or nineteen submissions to the Ontario Job Site Challenge, that where Ontario was looking for large mega sites of five hundred fifteen, hundred acres, that would be the host of the next major manufacturing industry in Ontario. When they originally put out the white paper, they described it as Ontario's next automotive manufacturing campus. It makes sense, going back down a little bit, I don't think they're necessarily looking for an automotive manufacturer, although I think that's part of what their, their target is. So, out of the eighteen or so sites that were nominated, the province narrowed it down to some smaller number of finalists. What we haven't been told at this point is how many finalists there are, but we do know that this is definitely the final round. And just so everybody on the committee knows, we submitted three rounds of documentation so far through the process. The last round that we submitted was in October twenty twenty, and it was put together by our, uh, by our consultants, Noletac. So, we're now in the final round, we're meeting with Noletac, so the very first thing we wanted to do was orient Noletac as, or excuse me, Newmark as to where we were in this process. So it was easy to explain without where we were in Ontario, what head Rebecca, and it was easy to point out that, um, that Edwardsburg Cardinal is located here, we have two international bridges, and what head Rebecca. Uh, we also wanted to show them what, what, what Rebecca? Uh, we wanted to show them that although the application had come from the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal, now that we're in the final round, this becomes really a United Kingdom initiative. And so, about a month or so ago, when I had, uh, inklings that we would make the final round, I went to the United Counties, I briefed all of the ten mayors from the ten counties, from the ten towns, as to what was happening, and I asked the support of the United Counties now to see us through this final round, and that's for Andy from then. I'll introduce you a little bit more later. But we wanted them to understand that this is now a United Counties initiative, being led by Edwardsburg Cardinal. Go ahead, please. So, we wanted to point out to, uh, Newmark that we're located at the junction of two twenty-nine highways, see, and, see on our mainland going across, Port of Johnstown, near the international bridge here, that was just the set of the picture. And of course, the Ontario Job Site Challenge plans, the Cedar Grove site is located in about this area. Go ahead, Anne. So, this was the original white paper that was released in February of twenty nineteen. Ontario searching for large tracts of land, five hundred fifteen, hundred acres, wanting to be able to support large-scale manufacturing areas. And the province said clearly that the present plan, we have no clear inventory of fully serviced mega sites available in Ontario. And Ontario tends to lose, uh, businesses to about twelve or fifty states in the U S, where you can walk into the state, uh, uh, capital and you can get a building firm out within a very short period of time. So Ontario was kind of lagging behind in that marketplace. The sites, uh, for this Ontario Job Site Challenge do not necessarily have to be investment-ready, and the applications will provide details of the timelines to be found, which all are ready and announced, but we're working with our engineers to determine how much time it will take to get our site shovel-ready. So, in, uh, council on February the twenty-fifth, passed the motion that we needed the Cedar Grove site into the Ontario Job Site Challenge. And, uh, this was our rationale for doing so, and that was the operative clause of our resolution. Go ahead, please. So, before the bylaw, we wanted to explain to Newmark how our Ontario Job Site Challenge lands, the Cedar Grove site here, how it related to the Ontario Empire, uh, ten thousand acres in the Edwardsburg land bank. And I think you've all seen pictures of our Edwardsburg land bank. This is ten thousand acres, fifty-five different numbers, thirty-five parcels of land that were purchased by the province back in the late sixties, early seventies, and sat there for over fifty years, nothing has happened to it. And now, maybe come to the, to the present day, and the province has absolutely no mechanism to divest this land and turn it into a manufacturing site. And Edwardsburg Cardinal really becomes the only entity which can deliver the building permits and, and, uh, approve the, uh, the site plan applications. So we wanted Newmark to understand that our objective is to buy all of this land. We're in advanced negotiations with the structure Ontario to buy this land. We've been meeting with them since October, the meetings are at the bureaucratic level at this point. And we just now bumped them up from the bureaucratic level to try to get them up to the political level. And, uh, our, our offer to get, to getting up to the political level was submitted last week. So we think that this is definitely, the Cedar Grove site, definitely the best place for one of the three mega sites in Ontario to choose. Go ahead, please. And go ahead, there we go. So here's our, uh, Cedar Grove road site, and it, or it is, uh, one, uh, two thousand eight hundred acres. And it, uh, it is, uh, one, uh, two thousand eight hundred acres. And, uh, the province owns all of this land that we're trying to buy except a few little green parts. And you can see these green particles here. Otherwise, and a little, kind of a few little orange residential properties on Cedar Grove Road. So we're definitely provide this as part of the ten thousand acre. Go ahead. Now, our engineers have narrowed down that twenty eight hundred acre site to this one thousand one hundred acres, which they think is probably the most easily serviced. And they picked that small site because it maximizes the setbacks, setbacks from existing residential properties here. It minimizes the impact on private, the own land. It's adjacent to the CN Railsburg, the abandoned Railsburg owned by CPR. And it pays advantages of surface transportation links. And there are four links on the site. One is from Angelo's Carp Stop here, down into the site by the Cedar Grove Road, up North Road. There's another access to the site from Prescott around County Road eighteen and down Cedar Grove Road onto the site. And there's a fourth, third access point, uh, Prescott, up County Road eighteen and then through Barton's Road. Then there as well, there are a couple of other access points off Cedar, uh, Glen's Mail Road up in this area. So then the question becomes, how do those are the transportation routes into the site? Then the question becomes, how do we provide services to this land? And the engineers have done a fair amount of work. Go ahead, Rebecca. They've done a fair amount of work, uh, from hydro point of view. We know that there's a forty four K V distribution, uh, substation here in Prescott. And that we could bring five kilometers, with five kilometers of distribution line, we could bring forty four thousand volts up on the south and take about two years to get that done. There's a hundred and fifteen kilovolt transmission line across the site here. And, uh, the requirements for the power were larger than forty four thousand volts. Uh, there could be a substation built on this line that would provide power directly out of the site. If it needs her power regenerator, there's a two hundred and thirty kilovolt transmission line that crosses up here. A substation could be built on that line and brought down here. So it's all of which the final line, uh, two years, the easiest. Three to four years for a substation on the, on the hundred and fifty line and a little bit longer, three to seven years on the two hundred and thirty K V line. Well, please. Next thing that should become water and sewer. Uh, and there's different kinds of water, potable water, cooling water and processed water. We know that Prescott has a water treatment plant. We buy water from Prescott under an existing agreement. We bring it along the eighteen inch pipe down County Road two and up onto the Johnstown Industrial Park. That pipe could be extended, I think, to about three kilometers up onto the site. It's cheaper to build a pipe than it is to build a water treatment plant. But as far as potable, uh, cooling water and processed water is concerned, we have a, a large pipe coming in from the Saint Lawrence River that we built and own. We built it through Greenfield Water and all when they were establishing their plant here. And when we built the, uh, pipe to bring water into a wet well located above here, we also established a, um, a base for a new water treatment plant just on the north side of County Road two. So again, uh, process and cooling water could come via that pipe via a three kilometer extension up onto the site. So go ahead, please. These are all things that, uh, how to do this best and cheapest and quickest is the question for the engineers inside. From a telecommunications supply, uh, we know that they will require high speed, uh, high speed air duct and the best term fiber optic cable. Uh, the town of Prescott has fiber optic cable hubs and that can be extended onto the site. But everybody pretty much agrees that the site is gonna have to have two sources of fiber optic cable. There's fiber optic hub here at the Spencerville Sub, the substation, the best one we call the Spencerville Switch. This is over on, uh, Spencer Street here. And that fiber optic cable could be brought down County Road four and across. Just a question again, the final money, that's been a cost the engineers are working on. From a gas point of view, there are three pipelines from the site. One of them is owned by Enrich. I think they run both the natural gas pipeline and the oil pipeline. There's another pipeline, I think it's the trans northern. But again, uh, there is a substation here on County Road eighteen, uh, that's a natural gas substation. And that natural gas substation brings gas from a point here on County Road eighteen along Glen's Mail Road, down the abandoned right away, uh, underneath the four oh one and then along the east, the south side of the four oh one and down on the Greenfield. So that four inch natural gas pipe could be expanded, uh, and, uh, the substation here could be expanded and they could bring, uh, natural gas into the site from that substation or from a new substation on this mine here. Go ahead, please. So those are the highlights that we wanted to mark out for, um, for Newmark. Three pipelines across the property, the CNR main line, immediately adjacent here, uh, the junction of four oh one and four sixteen, natural gas, abandoned rail, four year. This is a double fifty three L C D, uh, long combination vehicle interchange. So all of those things, we think, make this site one of the three sites that has to be chosen. Go ahead, please. It's, uh, two thousand acres, roughly. I don't, I don't want you to just get no headlines. So, uh, uh, the point that we wanted to make with that was that council is ready for business. We explained to them that when Greenfield was originally looking for, uh, water, uh, they came to us, they didn't know whether they were gonna be able to get enough water to handle the plant. They had to, uh, start some original negotiations with Prescott. Uh, but in the end result, I'll show you what we did for them. Go ahead. Go ahead. And so we built now this raw water intake line. Now, that raw water intake line was designed by the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal. It was, uh, tendered out as Edwardsburg Cardinal contract. It was constructed and supervised by Edwardsburg Cardinal engineers and was based on by Greenfield over a ten year, uh, agreement where they made the base of a line up here. So that worked out well for them because they ended up having a source of processed water and cooling water. It's not, it's not part of their capital cost. They were able to spread those costs over ten years. We were happy to provide that financing and support for them and were prepared to do the same kind of a thing for any kind of a, of a proponent that should, uh, come to us with a proposal for the Cedar Grove site lands. Highlighting the port of Johnstown, of course. Go ahead, please. And just as we finish the presentation with Newmark, wanted them to understand that the port of Johnstown is a busy port. It does receive international cargo. Go ahead. It does receive international cargo. This is the wind, the, the components of the windmill that went up to the Finch area. Go ahead, please. This is international steel coming in from, uh, Europe, uh, using our lay down area. And this is just one picture we happened to take where there were three, so three ships loading soybeans. This one loading, these two waiting, and this one waiting over here to take spring raw wheat to Mexico. So the port is a busy port. We wanted Newmark to understand the port of Johnstown is not just a name. It is a very busy seaway port. Go ahead, please. So in summary, we pointed out again, uh, the, the proximity of the Cruz rail yard. These are older pictures. This is one of the first pictures, but the Cruz rail yard has developed tremendously in the last three years. We've been a major part of that development, the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal, by providing assistance, site plan amendment agreements as quickly as we could. And we've had a hard time keeping up with Jones and his investments. Go ahead, please. So in summary to Newmark, we just pointed out, here's the site we're nominating. You know all of the attributes of the site and we're hopeful that we're gonna be. And we also, by the way, explained to them that we've done our Aboriginal consultations. We've sent three rounds of letters to the Mohawks of, uh, Aquasocny and three rounds of letters to the Algonwins of Ontario headquartered in Tempe. So that's the end of my presentation. Now I want to introduce Ann because, Ann, if you'd just stand up, please. Ann is the Economic Development Officer for the United Counties of Leeds and Grenville. And when I asked for county support, Ann jumped in right away and, uh, we conceptualized, uh, to provide, uh, the support by means of videos. So Ann's gonna introduce her videos and show you how the county is behind this project.
Sure. Thanks, uh, Your Worship. Um, so County's Economic Development, obviously we're here as, uh, support for, as one of our member states. Uh, being a chosen site is a very, uh, congratulations on having that, first of all. So how we can add value is we can utilize some of our marketing budget to support initiatives like this. And so this has happened very, very quickly in the way of, we issued an R F Q to do a video series that would complement, uh, the site selection process. Uh, that went out and we secured the company, uh, was it July eleventh? So it was a very quick turnaround and we hired local company L T R Corporation out of Genin Oakway. They've done some tremendous work for us in the past. Um, so two of the three videos are done. The first one highlights, uh, the site specific to, uh, to the Cedar Grove, Cedar Grove site and talks about some of the attributes that the mayor has talked about. But also some of, uh, you get some visual context to it as well. And then the second video, I'll talk to that in one second, but let's go with the first one if you're ready. Okay. We'll introduce the second one too while we're doing that. Oh, no.
Welcome to Edwardsburg Cardinal's submission to the Ontario Job Site Challenge. Three hours east of Toronto and forty five minutes south of Ottawa. We're located here in eastern Ontario, near the convergence of highways four oh one and four sixteen, railways and the Saint Lawrence Seaway. Our location is the Cedar Grove Road Site and offers a perfect exit Greenfield location, existing resources and connectivity. Suitable for all of Ontario's investment sectors. This large scale site is two thousand eight hundred sixty five acres and exceeds the provincial size request. A total of one thousand contiguous acres are allocated for the development site, maximizing residential separation. There are no sensitive uses in Cedar Grove Road Site such as daycares, schools, churches or nursing homes. There are no existing large scale agricultural uses adjacent to the developered area. Directly southeast of Cedar Grove, essential transportation infrastructure is well developed. The Prescott-Augnesburg Bridge is visible from above our site. One of the two international bridges connecting this area to Ontario's largest trading港, the USA. Port of Johnstown, a deep water port for eastern Ontario, offers rail to truck transloading and seaway connections west to inner North America and east to the entire world. Ottawa's International Airport is forty five minutes away. A one hundred and fifteen kilovolt electrical line crosses the south alongside a Trans Canada gas pipeline. Extension and expansion is easily imagined. Water and sewer can be extended from Prescott or on-site services created. The site has multiple possible vehicle entrances. Strong skilled labor programs support manufacturing innovation. The opportunities are enormous. An abandoned railway bed runs north, south through the site and could be recommissioned. It used to connect near here with the CN Mail Line, one kilometer south of Cedar Grove and two kilometers west of the port of Johnstown. Rail and intermodal services are available. Telecommunication towers are constantly being added in the area. Four G cellular is here and five G is on its way. Bell fiber optical cable is in the area now. There is a commitment to support from all surrounding municipalities to work with the province to accommodate project needs and deliver an investment ready site. Rarely does a location like Cedar Grove Road Site come along at the right time in history with existing key infrastructure and full community support. We're ready to meet and fulfill this challenge. So that's just a broad picture paint.
So the second video goes into your community support. And there's a selection of mayors that were chosen, uh, to talk about why it's a great feature for this region and what the opportunity is. And it's strategically, uh, the script was very, uh, focused on particular items from a site selector's perspective. They're looking at education, they're looking at hospitals, they're looking at other things that a site selector is going to consider. So we have a group of mayors, uh, from counties and from the city of Brockville, uh, talking a little bit of your site and endorsing it. So this is your community support.
Now requiring a plug in to be updated.
Does it require?
Plug in. Digital talk.
It's almost there.
Yeah. We do have backup in case. And if you can believe this, getting six mayors in a room within two days, actually happens.
Leeds and Grenville is an accumulation of thirteen municipalities who love to work together to bring prosperity to the region.
The city of Brockville fully endorses this application.
Jobs mean people. People mean community. And we're looking to build our community.
And it will be good for everybody.
Quite frankly, we're very well equipped, I think, uh, to be part of this success story.
This two thousand acre site that we've nominated into the Ontario Job Site Challenge is only a couple of kilometers from the Saint Lawrence Seaway, which of course was the original backbone of the manufacturing industry of Ontario. We've got a confluence of road, rail, junction of two major four lane highways, an international bridge, the port of Johnstown, which has intermodal travel right onto the port. Within one trucking day of this site, products will be able to reach one hundred and twenty million consumers in the northeastern U S marketplace. We have an abandoned rail line running right through the lands and this can be easily rehabilitated, providing easy access for large quantities of goods. The port of Johnstown offers tremendous opportunities to any manufacturing occupying this site. The port is presently importing steel from European market as well as other international products coming inbound to Canada. And of course, then there's the opposite, the tremendous opportunity to ship finished product out.
So manufacturing is alive and well in Leeds and Grenville. We have a perfect position with two, uh, land crossings into the United States. Uh, we have a dedicated workforce and, uh, we have a lot of opportunities for, for growth here in Leeds and Grenville.
The Rideau Canal, which is a World Heritage Site, it's designated by UNESCO. The senior levels of government has invested over one hundred million dollars in the critical infrastructure. That leads out to sustaining tourism.
Our municipality is home to the world famous Thousand Islands Bridge. Our port of entry and border crossing sees over two million visitors per year and twenty nine million dollars per day coming in and out of our country.
Can Arm, the Prismium Group and Northern Cables are three examples of local manufacturers already dealing with electrical components. We see great opportunities for local synergies between any new project and those three established businesses. Saint Lawrence College is excellent partner for a manufacturing sector. They can take local needs and put it into their curriculum.
One of the advantages of being in North Grenville is you're literally twenty five minutes from an international airport. It's a great feature.
This site will offer workers a tremendous range of lifestyle opportunities. They'll have everything from small town to rural living to cities.
We're seeing builders coming and building new homes for families to come and join us to have the active lifestyle that everybody dreams of.
We are seeing unprecedented residential growth. We've got just a wide array of housing to offer any new resident, uh, you know, to eastern Ontario.
Quality healthcare runs synonymously with economic development. We believe that and we've put our money where our mouth is. A hundred and eighty million dollar renovation and expansion to our local hospital ensures that we can give world quality healthcare for decades to come.
The township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands really is a lifestyle destination. If you want to work, live and play in an area that has a plethora of trails, kayaking, canoeing. We have a provincial park. We have the national park system on the islands.
Whether it's skiing in the wintertime, boating along the beautiful Rideau Canal up toward the nation's capital or along the Saint Lawrence River in the beautiful Thousand Islands, you name it, it's all here, year round.
The Brockville Art Center is one example of how we believe bringing world-class cultural talent to our community benefits all citizens. And we think there's a connection between having a well-rounded society and a healthy business community.
I'm the mayor and a mother of three school age kids and we chose North Grenville because of the outstanding quality of life it offers. It's rare in this day and age to find a community that is so kind and caring. It's rare in this day and age to find a community that is so kind and caring that offers exceptional educational options in both French and English.
When you visit Merrickville, you are right beside a World Heritage Designated Rideau Canal, but you're also on the Rideau River. And that is a great destination to have the great Canadian outdoor experience of camping, of fishing, of paddling and hiking. We are an eighteenth century community with twenty-first century opportunities. We recently have the expansion of fibre in our community. We are ready for business and my council is prepared to do whatever is necessary to help a proponent get construction started as quickly as possible. In summary, both as a municipality and as a region, we are ready to be selected under the Ontario Job Site Challenge.
We're seldom heavy. Now, now this is all sales at this point.
Yeah, and so some of those attributes are something that it's part of the site selection process. And certainly wanting your region's support behind you. Unfortunately, we don't know who else is in the race. I would have liked to gone further afar with that request, but we do know in this region, you are the site that we're backing. And we want to make sure you know the county's support is behind you. There's one additional promotional again, but it's a heavy marketing piece on the region that's being done as well. But this gives you the two mains specific to the site.
So thanks very much, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Mayor. And I've seen some of it several times now. And, and the, the videos are fantastic. It's, it's great to see the collaborative effort on behalf of all of the United, the municipalities and the United Counties and I guess the three towns as well, the three local towns. Good to see Mayor Ray Gray here as well, offering support. So, well done to those. Does anyone want to chime in or make comments?
Just, just one last thing, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
We did receive today, Rebecca sent it to us all as council members. We did receive today another letter of support from Prescott. And I wanted to thank Prescott for that letter of support very kindly. And I've asked Rebecca to prepare the response, which I've already signed and will tomorrow. So if this, that gets everybody on side.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Cameron.
Yes, just, just, just a couple of things. I'm going to go back to a, I guess, what a nineteen seventies saying, dynamite. This stuff is well done, Ann, well done, Mr. Mayor. Fantastic. Thank you.
Now, the last thing that happens is we have now, I think, is Dave still here? Dave, can you just tell us what is our final deadline to get material to Newmark?
The deadline is July twenty-third.
All right, now, and so just so everybody knows, everything that Newmark wants, we have basically submitted it in one form or another. At one point, they're looking at this round for a lot more detail to come to them on an Excel spreadsheet in a format that they have predetermined. In other words, they've told us it's a big spreadsheet, it's a big job. We want every cell populated and we want detail in each of the cells. So between our staff with Dave and his crew and Novatech and their crew, they will complete putting that together. Newmark has told us that after they have received all of the final submissions, and we don't know how many there are, they will review them all and then they will make a site visit to the site. And I have offered Greg Wassmann Dorf, the man that's in charge of Newmark, a helicopter tour. And Ann is going to be arranging the rental of the helicopter. And as that gets closer, and, and Mr. Newmark did acknowledge when you're looking at large scale sites like this, that is the best way to see them. We'll see it from a helicopter. We're glad to take, take you up on that invitation. So as it gets closer to the date, Ann and I will determine the route and what, what is, what he's going to see. So that's still in the planning stages. So that's sorry to jump in again.
That's good. Anybody else?
Well done, Mr. Mayor, and well done. I'm excited. I've been working all along, but that is a great presentation.
Yeah.
It's great. Thank you.
It is exciting for sure and a little bit scary in some ways as well. Right, so, you know, and, and I look at all this and the, the videos were excellent. The presentation was excellent, Commissioner. You know, when it comes down to, assuming we get approved and, and we're approved for this, does it have to become shovel ready? And they have a few couple of questions, I guess, is the problem. So the video just has the ballpark and you can answer that way. You know, do we have to then render it shovel ready? And if so, who's paying? I mean, I guess at the end of the day, it's a lot of money that I'm, I saw some of the numbers there. It's probably not the entire mayor. But, and then what would be the ballpark of what we'd be having to pay essentially to support this before it's even sold?
Okay, I appreciate the question because we do, we have done a bit of thinking. So I told you that we're, I'm going to put some detail out here now that, that is really, this is the first time you're going to hear this in public. Okay, and, and it is, we've refrained from putting it out into the public until this point in time, but I think this is the right time. So as I've indicated to you, we're attempting to buy this entire ten thousand acres. Our offer to the province is not going to be for the full amount that the province wants. But their, their want is based on what they call their appraisals by an AACI and, and accredited appraisal of Canadian Institute. We feel that they're a bit over ambitious. But we have indicated we will pay them a certain amount as a, as a, as a down payment. And it's a substantial amount of money which we will borrow. Once we, then we will be in and we will sell off the farmland on the east side of four sixteen. We will sell off as much of that farmland as we can, as, as expeditiously as we can to recoup the money that we borrow. And we've indicated to the province that the, after we've recouped our costs, every penny will go back into engineering for that site. Now, we don't know exactly what the timelines will be, but it's going to be engineering and pre-engineering costs, so much to get water to the site, so much to get sewer to the site, et cetera, et cetera. So it's easy for the engineers to figure out how much it's going to cost for electrical and natural gas and fibre. The water sewer thing's a bit different. But one of the things that we've been told is that the sites do not necessarily have to be investment ready. We just have to demonstrate in our answers how we can make them investment ready over what period of time. So that's what the detail is that they're looking for in this presentation.
Perfect. Thank you very much. In that way, this way? Counselor, no, no, Cody? Good. Uh, great. So thank you, Ann, for, for coming today and bringing the videos and doing such a fantastic job on it. It looks, looks awesome. Can't wait to continue moving forward with this. Mr. Mayor, great presentation.
And that's, and that's the first time I've seen the mayor's video, so thanks. I'm, I'm pretty excited about it too.
Good, good.
Fantastic. Hope to see you again soon, Ann.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
We are moving on to item five C. And we're welcoming, I believe it's Chris Clark from Xander Plan with a presentation for a development proposal. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Council. Can everyone hear me all right before I get going?
Yes. Chris, just before you begin, we like to try to keep them, the presentation to ten minutes or less. We usually provide some leeway. I think we're pretty flexible with that time, but just try to keep it to ten if possible.
I, I will do my best. So I'm just going to share my screen. I did a PowerPoint presentation, so I assume you'd like me to sort of do it right from here. So give me one second. Can you all see that presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right, so the purpose of this delegation is to discuss some development options for the property located at six zero seven five County Road forty-four. This is a aerial view of the property. It's just inside of the settlement area of Spencerville. We worked with our client to propose a consent application where he severed off the old stone house, which I think is right here, along with this garage. And basically this delegation is to discuss, you know, the viable options for the retained parcel left over. So the consent was filed in December of two thousand nineteen under file number B dash six dash twenty. It was approved May thirteenth, two thousand twenty for the creation of a two point zero one seven hectare parcel. Here's just a quick view of our severance sketch that was submitted to the United Counties. And here's a copy of the survey that was completed for the severance by Ron M. Jason Surveying. Sorry. So the retained parcel required the removal of the dwelling in the septic. Our clients are looking at options for the redevelopment of this parcel. EVB Engineering was a firm that was retained to deal with a bit of contamination that was on the site. So they were actually also retained to look at a couple just brief options for how these lots could be developed. And they came up with two different concepts. One was for four one acre lots for single dwellings. And the second concept was for six townhouse blocks with four to six unit buildings on each block. Those concepts were shared with the township who sent them to Novatech and reviewed, and we got some comments back. So just quickly, here's the layout for the singles. I know it's kind of hard to see zoom this far out, but essentially four lots ranging from basically just over an acre. Road frontages range from thirty to forty-one meters essentially. And all of the lots would have private well and septic systems under these sort of single dwelling layouts. The townhouse concept, as you can see, it sort of contemplated a new internal road with the several townhouse blocks. Now, they actually included the lot at six zero six eight County Road forty-four, which is the lot at the corner of the two county roads. I don't know why it was included, maybe to just have the new internal road come off County Road twenty-two. I don't think that would be the intention here. I think we're just going to stick with our overall parcel. So that concept did contemplate six townhouse blocks. One of the blocks would have had a new pump station, which I'll just show you is right here. That's where the pump station would have gone on block four. And townhouse style buildings are the preferred option. That's the option we've discussed with our clients basically since we started the severances. I don't think they've anticipated having single dwellings, but honestly, I think, you know, they're not looking to maximize development here. They're just looking to try and, you know, come up with an orderly development of the retained lands. So issues with the townhomes. So EVB Engineering spoke to Novatech, who indicated that tying into the sewer and installing a pump station was not an option for the property. New development would require individual onsite sewage disposal systems. These larger systems, if you're looking at townhome dwellings, larger communal systems often require responsibility agreements. And there's several policies in the current official plan that speak to the avoidance of such agreements. So just to briefly run through some official plan stuff. Section three point one, those are settlement area policies. They promote residential uses in fill-in intensification, encouraging higher densities. Section five speaks to infrastructure. Full municipal servicing is preferred, but as you're probably all aware, there are very few villages or hamlets in the area that have full municipal services. I think Spencerville has sewage services, but they do not have water. So it would be partial servicing on the lot. And the official plan says development on partial services shall only be permitted to address failed individual onsite water or sewer servicing. So official plan section five point four does state that a small quantity of residential development of five units or less may be permitted on common servicing. But the township will not consider proposals of five or more units or lots due to the responsibility agreements outlined in the official plan. Of more than five units or lots may be permitted only where there's no requirement for an agreement. And if any of you are unaware, just to quickly brief, to review responsibility agreements, they're essentially a legal agreement between the developer and the municipality to stipulate how the servicing is constructed, operated and maintained. It's usually involves upfront secured funds. And there are sort of, there are policies and guidelines for the province that speak to these responsibility agreements as well. And that's the D dash five dash two guideline. So single lots with private servicing would work. But as I mentioned, the preferred option is for townhomes. They're not looking to maximize density. They're looking at, you know, some smaller scale, maybe three to four units per townhome type style. It wouldn't be, you know, six or eight units in a row. So one of the questions we, and, and sort of options we discussed with our client was a plan of condominium and whether a plan of condominium would be an option for council to consider. So this option would not tie the township or village to any responsibility agreements. Those could be tied to the condominium corporation that's set up for the condo plan that's done. The increased density would be good for the town, but there would, wouldn't, wouldn't be any financial burden on the township or village to have secured funds or anything in place for any kind of servicing. And a plan of condominium would be supported by the infrastructure policies of the official plan. Here's just a couple of quick examples of some develop in Brockville that our clients provided. And as you can see, these are three unit sort of townhome triplex type buildings. Usually have a double driveway and then a single driveway separated by a bit of grass. You see these, some places in Perth too where our office is. So these are, you know, not maybe the most common type of townhome or triplex, but there are definitely several examples all around eastern Ontario. Additional benefits from development of these, of these lands. They're entirely within the settlement area. It would most definitely increase the range and mix of unit types available. I don't have a detailed list of the unit types, but it looks to me like there's a lot of, you know, single dwellings or maybe dwellings with additional or accessory apartments in them. I didn't see a lot of examples of, you know, higher density or, or apartments in, in the village. The property is within walking distance of downtown commercial uses and the increased density will help support the local economy and these businesses within the walking distance of the property. So the main question for council is, you know, would council support either of these options? Like would singles be a preferred method for development here? You know, would council support a plan of condominium if, if all that was done sort of properly and a condominium corporation was set up for the responsibility agreements? You know, is that something that the town could consider? And that's essentially it for the, for the presentation. I'm open to any questions or discussion points that we'd like to go over.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Clark, for your presentation. It certainly looks great. So let's start on this side of the room this time and we'll start with Tom. No comments, Tom? Nothing.
I think it's very well, but you have a proposal to make use of land in the area. We need more house in Spencerville. I guess the main question would be if we go to the condominium style. We're going to be looking to, I didn't quite understand what you said about what the pumping station was. If we're looking to put a pumping station to tie the sewage line to connect these into the room or?
Thank you. Mr. Clark, can you hear Counselor Hunter okay?
Yes, I heard. He just wanted to know about the pump station. So I think the official plan policies state that partial servicing is not an option. And the, the PPS has really gone towards this as well. So with only having sewer services and needing private wells, that wouldn't really meet the policies of the official plan or the PPS, which I, I think is one of the reasons why the planners at Novatech indicated that a pumping station and partial servicing wouldn't be an option for this site. It's not that we couldn't make the engineering work, I don't think. It's just, you know, doesn't really comply with some of the policies that are in place. So it's either full municipal servicing or full private onsite servicing, like private wells and private onsite septics. So the townhouses would have private onsite septic systems.
Well, I just, I know this is a question quite a number of years ago when we developed subdivision by the fire hall, but we wanted to have twenty lots in there and ended up with ten. We wanted to have twenty lots in there and ended up with ten that have private sewer and water there. There the wind commitment, but I thought to understand was in later years that uh. The province had agreed that a half service was better than no service at. Service at all, but I think it'd be better to have, I'm in favor of seeing some more. Development out there, but I think it'd be better to have it tied into our sewer system to help cover the cost of the. Of the sewer system if we have. Ten to twelve condominiums that are tied in, that's ten to twelve more pain doors helping maintain the sewer, so.
So uh Chris, thank you very much for your presentation, and just to let you know, I'm with Counselor Hunter here. Uh, I would really like to see a plan of condominium, uh, but I really would like to see it tied into the sewer system. Uh, if it can be done technically and engineering wise, uh, I think that's the way to go. Uh, Chris, I want to say that uh later on in our agenda, I saw another report from Vander Zand. Uh, uh, Xander Plan uh concerning uh the uh South Street lot. And uh in that uh report, on page seventy-seven and seventy-nine. There's a lot of references to how both the provincial policy statement. And uh the United Counties of Leeds and Brentville official plan, how they do support. Uh, partial servicing uh where full services are not available and sewer is. Uh, so I I would like to push the idea. Of uh having the townhouse development connected to the sewer uh system. A plan of condominium is great because that solves the whole problem of uh. Who's responsible, condominium owners are responsible, that I think that's just free. Uh, but I would like to see them all contributing to the sewer system. And then how the water system would be done on a plan of condominium, I'm not sure. But I knew, I know that New Terra does construct communal water systems. And it just seems to me that in that type of uh townhouse development. We would be smarter to require a communal water system uh supported by the condominium corporation. Than to have eighteen or twenty drilled wells. So I I would like to see the uh, the developer pushes uh pushes planners in that direction.
Well, through you, Mr. Chair, um, we personally at Xander Plan didn't speak to uh the Nova Tech Planner about this. Uh, that was EVB Engineering. Uh, so we could definitely reach back out to them and see. Uh, I think it's Steve Pence um to see if he would be open uh to, you know, re-engaging on these discussions of partial servicing. Um, I I will say, I'm pretty sure I saw some official plan policies that specifically say partial servicing is not a preferred option. Um, so I would only say that if we did go that route. A- and it did happen to say trigger an official plan amendment or something like that. I, you know, not that we don't want to do something like that. I just those, it always gets a little bit more complicated. When you start talking about OPAs and uh I think, well, that, well, we'll definitely have a discussion with Steve and see what he thinks on this issue, but uh. Uh, as far as I'm aware, it it sounded to me like they wanted a a communal septic system over a pump station and connection to the. To the municipal lagoon.
Well, I can, yeah, yeah, so I I I'm going to push a little bit harder because when I look at page seventy-seven and seventy-nine of my packages here in front of me. And it's the Xander Plan uh, it's a Xander Plan proposal for South Street. And it does really speak to the county official plan. It speaks to the provincial policy statement. As to why partial servicing, and I'm reading that to mean water only in this uh. Now, it speaks to why water only is a preferable option on South Street. And I know that that has to do with the fact that South Street is is deemed to be a kind of an infilling situation. But I regard this as an infilling situation as well, just larger in scope. But the fact that it's inside the settlement area tells me a a lot about making the best use of existing uh sewer services.
Well, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, um, like I said, we'll definitely engage with Steve again and and start discussions. And if we can make something work, I mean, I'm sure our clients would probably prefer to connect to the municipal servicing rather than. Have to have some type of responsibility agreements tied to the condo corporation. And I mean, if we're talking like, one of the main reasons we proposed the condo corporation in the first place. Was because of the provision of communal servicing. So if we can tie into the municipal servicing, we might not need to go through the condo corporation. Like, we might only be talking about a communal well, like you said. Uh, which, you know, I don't think has the same sort of responsibility requirements. It might. Um, but again, definitely something we'll, we'll speak to Steve about. We just sort of wanted, uh, I think before we really engaged on this. Uh, get counsel's sort of opinion and and any discussion points that we should consider. So I very much appreciate your opinion on the matter, and uh I'll be sure uh to discuss it further with uh with staff.
I'm good. My questions have all been answered. Uh, I am, I do hide in favor of the connection to the uh to the sewer.
Counselor Dilavah?
Thank you, uh, you're the chair. I have a couple of questions here. Uh, when you said that we um. Nova Tech said that we can't tie in their sewers and like the mayor, Mr. Mayor said we have water from the tear, when the tear also has a. A community system which do sewers, wastewater and outable water. So if it's a matter of, of, you know, not using our pumping station. You can go that route. Uh, I'm against the condominium a hundred percent. I was kind of looking, I was excited when you wanted to do uh. Uh, your townhouses of four, and I'd just like to know, would they be affordable housing if you went that route?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, um, I I would have to sort of, like, I don't have any details on the designs at this point. Uh, I think I I have seen these type of townhome styles that do have basements. And we have worked on projects here in Perth where we've converted some of those townhome basements into accessory apartment units. Um, so uh while I can't comment at this time whether or not the units would be considered affordable, the way they're proposed. I think there would definitely be opportunities for affordability and additional potential for, you know, smaller. Units geared towards single families or low-income families as opposed to, you know. New townhomes that aren't going to be available for, you know, save a a small percentage of the population who who can afford it, right? So that's definitely something we can take into account in our design and and make sure that we include those provisions and and whatever affordability we can.
Uh, yeah, so uh, thank you, Mr. Clark. This is a very intriguing proposal, to be perfectly honest. Um, and I think it comes at a time where we're seeing a lot of uh stuff in the community as far as. Uh, the need for some some extra population, to be honest, you know, jobs, infrastructure supports. Um, so I mean, you know, my first meeting was was, you know. Uh, keep it small, but then the more you think the potential here and the area that it's in where it doesn't really conflict with any of our other. Uh, housing that's out there, which we had issues with in the past, you know, and it does seem right for an area of capacity. Growth like this in in regards to either freehold townhomes or or condominium association. Um, uh, and again, you know, we talked about the pumping station, which I think that's something that can be comfortable as well to figure out the water system, so. Uh, you know, I just, I I like the look of it. I do feel personally just uh. Because of the shared agreements that that the condominium association is probably my preference if we're to talk with this in others, but uh. Uh, you know, it is something that uh, uh, that is intriguing as far as the area goes and helping with growth. So again, thank you for the proposal.
Thank you.
Uh, does anyone else want to go one more? No, no, everybody's happy.
Well, I, I guess I do have a question. I'm trying to bring up a map and it's not, not coming up, but um. Uh, from what I understand, uh, the north side of County Road twenty-one, um, across from Lennox Drive or Lennox Street, Lennox Road. Is a cloud township road. Has there been consideration to working with the area property owners to. Extend the boundaries of this development to perhaps make a. Maybe a a more interesting, more fit for a country style. Type development that doesn't squish a bunch of homes into a small area and create a new road. But I think there's, there's some. There's some land there that could potentially be. Adjoned together to create a a larger estate-style subdivision. But it fits more with, I think, the development on the, for example, on the south side of County Road twenty-one. Where the fire hall is. I think people wouldn't be, as opposed to that style where everyone has a big lot. Versus one little roundabout.
You're more in favor of the uh, of the four, of the four law of the. That what your suggestion is?
I'm more in favor of using the land available in a better capacity than is presented by looking beyond. The boundaries of this proposal.
I know with the folks you.
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
The, 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 the owner only owns so much land here.
Yep, so what I was saying is working with area property owners to develop their property a little more also.
Well, through you, Mr. Chair, I, you know, I think we could maybe look at that option, you know, the the concept that was presented with the internal road. That accessed County Road twenty-one. Uh, I I think that was a little extreme. Uh, I, uh, if you look at that concept or, you know, I could even scroll back to it. That road was anticipated at a full right-of-way width of twenty meters. Uh, if you're talking a plan of condominium, often those roads can be much smaller. And I also want to reiterate that 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 townhouse concept that we showed was very much a. How can we get as many units as possible type development? Whereas our our clients are not looking at, you know, getting the most dollars out of this that they can. The the discussions we've had all along have kind of been um just a small, even a driveway or a small internal road. That accesses two or three townhouse buildings as opposed to five or six. And you wouldn't be looking at nearly as much infrastructure in terms of new paved roads or anything like that, so. You know, I think that might be maybe a little bit more suitable, given some of the comments about, you know, working with other property owners. And I also want to point out, there is a bit of a regulated area here that isn't really visible on some of the aerial photos that I showed. Uh, and it does encompass some of the lands to the north. Um, so, you know, we'd have to look to with, I think it's CRCA or South Nation Conservation here. We'd have to look and see if they would be even be open to, you know, increased development within the regulated area if that were the case, so. Something we can definitely consider, but I I think at this point, you know, our, like I said, our clients aren't looking to go crazy here. And and make the most money they can. This is really about how we can benefit the town and and bring some new units in. Uh, but at a a density and and, you know, amassing that's more suitable for the type of and amount of development that's in the settlement area.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Clark. Um, all right, to staff, to Wendy, to, do we? What do we need to give, Mr. Clark? And I think there's a pretty clear consensus around table that, that we're very much in favor of development of this corner. Uh, if I've read my table correctly, uh, I think for the most part, connecting it to partial services. Uh, seems to be favorable among the group if if at all possible, if not, the suggestion of, you know, private contained servicing. Do we need to make more recommendations or more suggestions or?
For me, Chair, I think, um. I I read, I'm reading the room the same way you are Deputy Mayor, and I think our next steps for staff would be. Um, to have another conversation with Nova Tech, let them know how this conversation went tonight and revisit partial servicing. Is that an option? Are there things we can do to make that an option? And um, if not, explore the condominium agreements and there will probably be a, in the near future, another conference call with that, with Danny Planer. At the top of it.
Sure, yeah, and and Wendy, um, uh, when, and depending upon how, whatever applies to that. If they say no partial service and and it just says because it doesn't relate to original policy statement or to official plan. Um, can we get a little, a little more understanding, a little more uh than just that? So that members of the committee understand exactly why uh that that isn't encourageable? And what would happen if we chose to go against, against that? Certainly listening around the table, I get the feel that, you know, that answer isn't. Really well understood. Uh, it seems like everybody around the table, myself included, think that partial service is better than not, so. Uh, and it does feel to me like we're rounding out uh an area as well, so. Um, I don't know, I think there may be some misunderstandings as to how that really, so if you can give a little bit of understanding for.
For the next meeting, would that be okay?
Uh, if that works, yeah, if that works, yeah, sure. Everybody comfortable with that around the table? Yeah, that's good, okay, good. Uh, again, Mr. Clark, uh, thank you. Uh, we look forward to seeing some more. Uh, well, this legacy project definitely continuing uh in whichever manner it, it needs to go forward.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and to the rest of council. Uh, I know we'll definitely be uh working closely with Nova Tech and with Wendy there to. Sort of move things forward uh as quickly as we can, and hopefully we have something for you to to review pretty soon.
Good, thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, let's get on to the meetings. So six A one, which is under land use planning, which is the application for site plan control agreement. That's amended, right? Yeah, uh, so do you want to give us a brief, brief?
Yes, absolutely, for sure. So we have received an application for a site plan control. Um, or an amendment to the agreement for electronic language communication, also known as ELC automotive at nine twenty-one County Road two. They are proposing to expand uh their car detailing shop. Um, so the. Uh, they're, they're building an addition onto the existing building there, and that's going to require an amendment to the, to the agreement. Um, would just note that the location they want to build their addition in. Uh, would approach on the price six meter stepback to the interior property line. Um, the applicant has applied for minor variance um to permit the three meter stepback to the interior line on the east side of the property. We held a committee of adjustments meeting earlier today, and that was granted. So um, I've included here um the amending agreement and proposed site plan. Um, also for your review, the uh interesting site plan agreement and uh the current. Don't.
Uh, thank you, my dear, good, good, um, brief update there. My uh question before we go uh any further is today at four was the uh minor variance meeting. Uh, it passed. Was there uh anyone in attendance uh with objections? Are we expecting any? You know? So no, nothing to that, so.
Um, there were no formal comments from residents. I received one phone call from a neighboring resident who. Um, had very kind words to say about the applicant and what a great review was.
Positive versus negative. Good, all right. Uh, I think this one, instead of going all the way around the room, I think I will just ask for for hands for people to speak uh first. So uh, Mr. Mayor first and Counselor Cameron second.
I'd like to get right to the meat of the matter and the recommendation.
Okay, so moved, seconded, seconded by Counselor Dilavah. Uh, is there further discussion? Counselor Cameron?
Well, I, I, I just have not on, not on the mayor's uh.
It's already moved and seconded.
Okay, fine. I just, I just want to draw your attention to page thirty, and it's under the background. Uh, it's the third paragraph. And it starts off and says that the owner vendor came to, now. I think I know what the word, the wording here means, but I just want to make sure that we're not dealing with some. Another elephant, and it's, it's on the, on the last line where it says uh. So many square feet was constructed for a new car dealership. Now, he does not run a new car dealership. I understand that the dealership is due to the area, but it is not a new car dealership. He does not buy and sell new cars. I just don't want to see that somehow twisted somewhere down the line. So if we remove the word new uh and just call it a car dealership, that would surprise. Uh, unless there's other opposition.
From myself to staff, is that's a background or information? Is it, it's not part of the actual recommendation that I'm moving forward? Is there an issue with that word or? It's not part of the actual recommendation that we're moving forward, is there an issue with that word, or?
To the Chair, my, my intention was that the, the old building was demolished and a new building was being constructed, I didn't even say.
I understand that too, but, but somewhere down the line. Someone may say, well. I'm, I'm, I'm entitled to have new cars to a new dealership, a new car dealership. Which may or may not bring. Concerns from new car dealerships.
Thanks, thank you, uh, do you have a solution?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman, but, but, but my solution comes from my old English teacher. And, and I, I don't want to bore anybody, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna go about it this way. New is an adjective, modifying the word dealership, not modifying the word car. So it's a new dealership, and car is also a noun, but in this case, it's an adjective. Also modifying the word dealership, now that's what my old English teacher would have told me, and she would have said that. If he, if the writer meant that it was going to be selling new cars, they would have put a hyphen between the word new and car. And that would have made it very clearly, uh, that new car was an adjective modifying the word dealership. This is why my English teacher talked to me, and I absorbed it all, if you can believe it.
I'm not a hundred percent sure that my English teacher would, would totally agree with that, but, anyway. There, 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 there we are, uh, we can, we can either.
We're good.
Take, take the word out or leave it in.
I think we're good.
As, as long as, uh, it's understood.
Uh, okay, so further.
I mean, we've recorded that as well.
Grandma Leslie.
We're not being paid for an English session.
No, I wish Mayor Baker was here. Fun with this one. Um, is there, uh, any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. If I hear no further discussion, I'm just gonna call the question. Sorry.
I'm waiting, let me see, all in favor?
Oh, okay, all right, so I'll call the question, all in favor? All right, unanimous, we're good. All right, so Wendy, an update for the application for, uh, I think it's. For the number two, which is severance at twenty one oh seven Yocan Road.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, this is, um, an interesting severance application at two one zero seven Yocan Road, um. So what's interesting about this is that these two lots have already existed as separate parcels previously, and they were merged. Um, together, my understanding is the applicant was not aware that they were being merged, um, he bought the, um. The, the land with the understanding that they were separate parcels and, uh, had planned to, um, build on, on both of them one day, um. But two, two adjacent lots, um, with the same ownership, it happens at the Land Registry Office. Um, the applicant's lawyer who provides them that the severance is the best way to make these separate parcels again, so just want to note that. With a severance, we are not unmerging the parcels, we have to create a new parcel, so. The, uh, policies of our official plan do apply here, um, but we also want to take into consideration that these two lots already existed as separate lots. Um, before, uh, two thousand and seven, I think it was. Um, so when we look at the, um, we look at the application and the official plan, I can see that most of this lot is covered in significant woodland. Um, where we normally request an environmental impact assessment, I've had some conversations with the Conservation Authority. And they would not object to us waiving an environmental impact assessment in this case. Um, oftentimes, or, I mean. When the land is within three hundred meters of a water course, it usually triggers an archaeological assessment. Um, but the water course is almost four hundred meters, um, a really good building envelope, I also think it's appropriate to waive the archaeological assessment. An alternative to this, if you were more comfortable with it, would be, um, to add a note to the severance that says. Um, if any artifacts were found, that the Ministry of Heritage Tourism Culture and Sport shall be notified, um. And, uh, we also completed minimum distance separation calculations within fifteen hundred meters of the subject lands, there were two life support facilities close by, but they. Uh, meet the minimum distance required from MDS, um, the, um. The one part I struggled with is with the zoning bylaw, where the frontage for these two lots. Um, don't, there, there isn't enough frontage to have two lots with seventy meters of frontage, so a minor variance, um, would be required. Here, so.
But they were that way before.
But they were that way before, exactly.
Okay, uh, thank you, thank you, good, uh. Good summary of that, uh, one as well, so, uh, looking around the table for. Uh, hands to start a conversation or move?
Well, I'm in favor of move, but first, I'd like to just say, I thought. A number of years ago, though, the province changed this merging of, of lots, but it became once a severance, always a. A severance, so, I don't, don't really, you seem to run into a lot of trouble, isn't that? Merging stuff and getting tenure numbers mixed up and stuff, and I really think that. Council and counties maybe should put some pressure on that, so I don't really think the merging of lots should because your same owner buys a couple of lots, that shouldn't be happening. Page severances and headroom severance and survey and deed it and everything, and all of a sudden now. Somebody because just on the same, and he puts the same name down to, now all of a sudden, has to through the same. Thing all, all over again, and, and I know that Wendy. Has come up, and he found out about these archaeological studies. Um, and I really think this is something that's, we have in our, our severance. Obviously, having to do archaeological studies on every lot that you're going to get severed, I think this is something we really need to look after, this is an expensive. Proposition sometimes, it's an area that. There's no need for archaeological studies to be done, I don't require them, where, where questionings to be done, so.
You know, just, just in regards to the, the archaeological assessment as well, you know, and, and I don't know if the requirement's a provincial requirement or a local requirement, but, you know. If, are there any legal issues that come out of us, you know, basically saying, but don't worry about it this time, I'm not sure, but that would be a concern that I would have unless there's something that we know.
I can direct that back, uh, to staff, but I think it's within three hundred meters of, of water course we have to, right?
Um, to the Chair, the, the ministry has a checklist, um. That, um, you can fill it, it's called the checklist for the non-specialist. And, uh, you can fill out the, the checklist, and it'll help you determine if, if the, um, archaeological assessment is required. It's about two pages on the checklist, like maybe ten questions or so, but, um, the, the rest of it is all like little qualifiers and, and, and notes and helpful. Oftentimes, what I would do is I would ask the applicant to fill out the checklist with me, they might have more knowledge. If it is a man-made water course to be ditched, then, um, no, it wouldn't trigger an archaeological assessment, the reason for the water course is that, um. In the, in the past, um, development would have occurred, they had come in with him to bring him the ways of a water course, so it's more likely that artifacts be found.
And I guess, to the Chair, I mean, I guess that's more to my point is, you know, why do we even mention it here, if it's, if it's greater than three hundred meters, I'm not sure why we were in there, I guess.
Yeah, well, to eliminate it. That's on the tool, and then.
Yeah, unless there's at least not, correct, so I'd like to view it, I'd stand by one. Um, and then, uh, you know, we are just reestablishing properties already existed, so, my only other thing I had is, why are you making them pay for this as well within a second time? But that's a different issue.
Yeah, so will we be in favor of waiving fees for the, for the minor variance that's going to be required? Okay, um, thanks, Chris, uh, further, further comments?
Oh, Bush.
Uh, I just want to run one thing first, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, Chris waved, a good thing I actually had it in my notes as well for, uh, the possibility of waiving fees for a minor variance that. Unfortunately, you know, due, due to the circumstances out of their control. And they're being required to pay for something that they already paid for before, so. Uh, as a Chair, I'm certainly in favor of, of waiving those, those fees for that minor variance, uh, just looking to see if there's. Other willingness around the table for that same, same sort of thing.
I think back to when, what was the date you said that they were severed in the first place?
Um, in nineteen ninety eight, the parcels were severed, um.
Nineteen ninety eight, they were, they wouldn't have needed a minor variance to, what frontage on the lots at that time, that's always required. We changed that in twenty twelve, so, I don't. She should be able to manage, it's required here, because they left qualification when the lots were severed.
But we're re-severing now, correct, so you need the minor variance because it's one lot, we're breaking back into, into the wrong, yeah. Well, the question is whether we would wait fees for that, so just. For a second motion perhaps, uh, do we need a motion?
Yep, I just wanted to jump in here with a different concept here, this, uh. Comes to me, uh, as a duplication of an issue that we dealt with. I don't think it ever came to this committee because the, the, uh, owners of the land dealt with it in a different manner. Uh, these laws did exist at one period in time. And although it is common to, to separate them again by means of the severance, I think they can also be separated by means of the judge's order. And if I recall correctly, that's what happened in the other case that I dealt with earlier in the spring, I think around the March, April, May, the period of time. And, uh, because there were so many issues involved trying to get a severance. That, in that case, in the case I'm talking about, that previous case. Because there were so many issues around trying to get a severance, they went directly to the other method, which was the judge's order and got it done. PDQ, so I was wondering if the, uh, proponents here had ever looked at that option instead of the severance option? Have they done that?
Yes, to the Chair, yes, they, they did ask, their lawyer advised them that the severance was the best option. When the counties received the application, the counties, um, very similar to what Councilor Hunter had mentioned, once a severance, always a severance. We should be able to unmerge these, but the, um, planners of the counties had a conversation with, um, the applicant's legal counsel, I understand. And it was understood that the severance was the best option, I'm not a, I'm not a lawyer, but I can, I can help process a severance, so if that's what they'd like to do, then.
Yep, I agree with you, yeah, so let's just deal with it, uh, Mr. Chair, the, the recommendation in front of us doesn't. Deal with whether or not we charge them for the minor variance application, so it couldn't, it, it, with your indulgence, can we just add that as a clause?
Yes.
And that, the fees for a minor variance application be waived?
With the whole committee?
Well, it's not, there's no, there's no motions, there's no motion on the table, yeah.
I'm comfortable with it, um.
May I, may I just interject?
With making a small amendment to that.
Well, it will be an amendment, because there's no nothing on the floor at this point.
Just, just, are we, are we going down a slippery road here, are we setting a precedent? By do, by doing this? What, what is the fee for a minor variance?
To the Chair, six hundred and fifty dollars.
That's pretty healthy, too. I've just spoken right here.
I heard it, uh, any further? Okay, Mr. Mayor, you want to read what you've got?
Okay, so I'm gonna move the recommendation with both operative clauses in it, and then if I can find a second, there will be one just that. If there's an objection to the minor variance clause, then we can deal with that as a separate, but I'm gonna. When I make the rec, when I make the motion, it's going to have both operative clauses in.
Can I stop you for one sec?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and, yeah, my mind's going, there hasn't been a move or a second for the original recommendation, correct? Okay, good, yes, you're right, okay, go for it.
Okay, so I'm moving, looking for a second, you're, got it, that's the commit, I've got a second. Now, the committee recommends that council recommended favor of severance being eighty nine twenty one. With the condition that a minor variance be obtained to allow our lesser frontage on the severed and retained lots. And that, the fee for a minor variance application be waived, so both operative clauses are in the motion.
Good, all right, uh, it's been moved, uh, further discussion. Seconded, uh, it's seconded by Councilor Dilavah, further discussion, good, uh, then I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Good, and again. All right, so let's move on to application for severance, so Street Jansen, um, fifteen oh four one oh seven Ontario Corporation, Wendy.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, we received a severance application, um, for the creation of a new lot on South Street in Village Spartaville. For a proposed semi detached dwelling, um, Nova Tech has prepared some background information, um, for the committee to review, so you'll see, um, a report from Nova Tech. Uh, written submissions to the consent granting authority, company neighboring residents, there's also some comments from the Centralization Conservation Authority, it's already commented on this application. Um, the Ministry of, in Byron Constitution Parks, has, um, provided a letter at the request of one of the residents regarding butternut trees. Um, the applicant has also provided, uh, planning rationale prepared by Xander Plan. And they have prepared a hydrological study prepared by Maury Associates. Um, the recommendation, which, um, is, um, put forward by Nova Tech and again by staff, is that. Uh, the applicant entered into a development agreement, um, so that the, uh, recommendations in the hydrological study will be.
Good, and. Yeah, so the applicants are aware of exactly what the butternut tree.
Uh, yes, to the Chair, so the, um, applicant has been the neighbor of the, um. Uh, the name of the act is speaking to you right now, um, Invasive Species Act? Um, and that they have already hired an assessor to, um, take a look at the trees on the site. The letter from the ministry indicates that it is the, um, developer or owner's responsibility to ensure that the Invasive Species Act is.
Okay, so that is covered on my notes before we start, and my understanding is there's two wells there already, correct? Yes, and the hydrological study is done, and, um. Is there any more information regarding the wells that we need to know? Okay, sorry.
Uh, to the Chair, I read through the hydrological, um, study, and again, I'm not an expert on this, um, but I, I think it is. Um, fair and responsible for the development agreement to be entered into, so that that could be, um, also the property, and whoever were to purchase those lots would be aware of those, um, recommendations.
Right, and one thing that I had before we throw out different questions from everybody, did comments that came from. One of the citizens, when I did a search, or we did a search on it, it referred to oil wells, not water wells, correct?
Yeah, if, if I may, but, um, one of the letters from a, a neighboring resident quoted, um, Article three point one point one, but. Um, it wasn't clear article of, of what, and it said that, um, wells couldn't be drilled within fifty meters of the road allowance, but. I mean, I mean, raised my eyebrows because that. We wouldn't have any wells, so I'm trying to find article of, of what, that's what I could find is, um, the.
Fifty meters of, uh, high voltage power lines.
The Oil, Gas and Salt Resources of Ontario Provincial Operating Standards, so I think what that article is referring to is drilling. Um, for oil and gas and not for water.
Yeah, okay, just so that everybody's clear on that, uh, for the most, so, uh, all right, so open for, open for discussion. Or moving and seconding, uh, now, let's, who wants to go first?
I just.
Yes.
I'd just like to make one comment, and, uh, and that, a comment pertains to the planning rationale that was submitted by that Xander, Xander Plan.
And just one comment, I think, uh, Tracy is, uh, Tracy Sander is on, so if there are any questions for, for that, uh, she's on there, and I think, uh, that's a.
Okay, well, I didn't, I don't, don't have any, any questions, I just wanted to comment on the, on the, on the. Report that I've got here in front of me, which I find to be all encompassing and very well constructed and put together, and. You've heard in the previous discussion that I've referred to pages seventy seven and seventy nine. Of our packages, because I think that this report addresses a number of, uh, issues that. That would apply to that larger, to that larger piece of land, and certainly with the rationale that's provided here. Uh, about, uh, how the, uh, the lot, the lots on South Street would be, uh, uh. Would meet the, uh, requirements of the provincial policy statement for partial servicing and. How they meet the requirement of the United Counties and Red Bull Official Plan for partial servicing. And how they meet the requirements for the townships, uh, planning bylaw and planning and official plan. For partial servicing, I mean, this thing all fits together very neatly, and it's very well argued in this, in this. I mean, this thing all fits together very neatly and it's very well argued in this, in this report that I have in front of me. So I, I just, um, I, I think this is a very complete package. And when it comes time, Mr. Chairman, I'm looking forward to supporting the recommendations.
Good. Uh, further discussion, anyone? Councillor? Councillor Dillabot, I'll move it. Moved. Wait a second.
I will.
I was letting you go first. I had a question. It's okay, we'll come back. There's still. Second by councillor Cameron. Uh, back to you for further discussion.
So I just, I'm looking at this and I'm, you know, not an expert on, wouldn't know that a butternut tree is especially from, I don't know, five thousand feet up where we're at right now.
Sure.
But I'm trying to figure out why they positioned the severance where as they did because it does look like the smaller properties where all these butternut trees are. And it really, you know, we talked with the three point five uh meter setback, you know, in a, in a small part of the back here, but the rest, it seems to be off about trees. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, is, is there a reason why they picked that, you know, or?
Through the chair, I think there's an easement on the, you know, side of the properties or.
And they're, and they're well aware of what the requirement is, you know, they've been through that, uh, for what works there for a butternut tree. So they're well, you know, aware that it falls directly on their shoulders or.
One, two, and three.
It simply gives them an excuse to get over the back window. I just just tried to figure why they put severance there, but that makes sense, I guess.
Yes, but there is one more thing that applies here, Mr. Chairman, and that is that uh, in a previous uh life in a, in a, in a previous issue, the township planted a butternut grove. We entered into an agreement with South Nation Conservation to plant a butternut grove on Blair Road. And in that particular case, I think we planted something like twenty-five or thirty-five butternut trees. Um, and the reason we did that was because a previous developer had ran into a butternut problem with butternut trees on his lot. And I think there were six, and those six had to be replaced. So by planting these uh thirty-five trees on uh, on uh, on Blair Road, under an agreement with South Nation whereby they planted them and they tended them and they monitored them over a four-year or three-year period. We exchanged the ones that had to be removed from the previous development for six trees on this butternut grove. And this developer would certainly uh be able to apply to the township if he's actually got a class-three butternut tree. Uh, he'd be able to apply to us to exchange the ones that he has to remove uh for one or two on our site, uh, Blair Road. So that option is also available to him.
Those are good, great points. Thank you. Uh, further discussion? All right, so we have a mover and a seconder, correct? Then I will call the questions. See no further comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Namus again, good. Oh, all right, so we're on four. Application for zoning bylaw amendment to ten thirteen County Road twenty-one, Vans and Billby Farms Incorporated.
Thank you, through the chair. Um, as, as you mentioned, we have received an application for a zoning bylaw amendment at ten thirteen County Road twenty-one. Um, at, at this point, I'm um hoping the committee will allow staff to schedule a public meeting so that we can hear comments from the public about um, the, uh, the proposed zoning bylaw amendment. This amendment um is to fulfill a condition of a severance that was conditionally granted um earlier this year. Um, so it was a severance for a surplus dwelling to a farming operation. And um, we um, I, I had a condition that the um agricultural person be rezoned to prohibit um non-agricultural or residential use.
Good. Uh, Wendy, for some reason, and I'm not going through my paper on my, on my online one, I don't have this one on my online one. So um, the direction we're looking for coming out of this in my notes is that we need to set a date. Is there a date recommended for this one?
Through the chair, I would recommend the controlling of the public meeting on August third at six P M. That's right before the next C B C meeting.
August third, six P M, right before the next C B C meeting, okay, correct, which is a Tuesday if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, uh, so everyone knows that, that that's what this discussion for, setting a date for, for the open, open.
Public meeting.
Public meeting, sorry, uh, public meeting. Um, any comments or any further discussion on, on this one? Seeing none, I need a mover then. And do you need? Is there a recommendation or?
Yeah, there's a recommendation.
Yeah, sorry, I don't have it. So, yes, if you.
Okay, yes, through the chair. That committee directs staff to schedule a public meeting for the purpose of giving the public an opportunity to make representations in respect of the zoning bylaw amendment application received for one zero one three County Road twenty-one in accordance with the terms of the planning act.
Okay, and that, that date would be August the sixth at six P M.
August the third at six P M.
August the third since we. Six. Okay, so what do you move?
Solid.
Moved by councillor Cameron, need a seconder by Mr. Mayor. All in favor? Good, Namus again.
So that recommendation that just came forward is different than the recommendation that's on my sheet here. I just saw, we're not working from the sheet, we're working from that, on the, the, the.
From the recommendation that was read.
No, it was read, yeah.
That's on the electronic page.
Okay.
All right, there was the one that was read. It was read aloud, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so. So what is your, what would your recommendation say, Mr. Mayor, and then just for clarification?
I, I tried to follow along, but the one that I've got in front of me is the same basic concept. It is recommended that the township receive the scheduling of public meeting date for the application filed. Is it the same wording?
That's the, that's the, that's the Nova Tech recommendation. Staff recommendation is, is above that.
Staff recommendation is above that?
Yes.
It's one way.
It's one way. Which is basically the same.
Oh, okay, and all right, I see. So I'm looking in the wrong place here. Okay.
Okay, so clear then? Okay, good. So the, uh, the recommendation as read is the one that's.
Yeah, and who's the mover?
Uh, councillor Cameron was, yeah. And, and you were the seconder. And we voted in. Okay, so number five is the application for zoning bylaw amendment for thirty-two Davids and your plan, uh, Smolder Enterprise, it's Wendy.
Um, yeah, through the chair. So again, this application for zoning bylaw amendment is to fulfill a condition of severance um at thirty-two David Street. Um, so um, at this time, again, staff are just requesting or recommending that the committee allows direct staff to schedule a public meeting. My hope is that the date could be July twenty-ninth, which is a Thursday. We can hold this public meeting, understanding that it would be um likely well-attended. Um, we would have space to hold a public meeting at the central fire station where we don't have to go upstairs where it isn't air-conditioned, it'd be more comfortable. There's room to spread out and hold the meeting safely. So um, hopefully we're okay with July twenty-ninth, but would like me to allow staff to schedule a meeting.
Good, thank you, Wendy. So July, just for clarification, July twenty-ninth, which is a Thursday, six P M, at the Spencer Field Firehouse.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I need a mover and a seconder, and then we can have some discussions. Moved by Cody Oakway. Second by councillor Dillabot. Uh, all right, so it's on the floor, uh, of four discussions, just, we're just setting a meeting date. There really shouldn't be a lot to discuss, right? It's public meeting, right? So, okay, uh, so then hearing no discussion, I will call the question then. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Namus, good, and moving on to just go through. All right, so we're on six, which is zoning bylaw amendment and amendment of draft plan of subdivision for metal lands, our Xander Plan again, two zero five seven eight seven six, Ontario Incorporated.
Um, through the chair, so we have received an application to amend uh approved draft plan of subdivision. Um, the proposal would, um, I mean, it would, it would allow a significant amount of lots to be developed. I guess it'd be like a, a large increase in intensification. I think it's up to a hundred and forty-six um units. Um, the application was originally submitted in two thousand and eight. Um, and then it was um amended in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, um, again, to allow more intensification. So with the application, we requested that the planning rationale that was submitted for two thousand and seventeen um be updated. And also that the applicant uh provide an updated uh servicing study and traffic impact assessment. So we have received um those uh plans. We are, we've asked for J L Richards to do a peer review on those plans. Um, but again, I, at, at this point, we are looking for directions from the committee to set a public meeting date. Part of those plans is going to require a zoning bylaw amendment um to allow um semi-detachment townhouse units on the, on the land. So the public meeting for zoning bylaw amendment and the public meeting for an amendment to the approved draft plan of subdivision can be held at the same time when we can hear comments from our residents um at the, at the same meeting. Um, the counties has requested that we schedule the public meeting for the um subdivision amendment. So um, I, I think we're happy to do that. We're scheduling the zoning bylaw amendment meeting anyways, so um. Yeah, at this time, I was, I was like, maybe to um allow us to schedule a public meeting. I don't have a date planned yet because we would like to make sure that we have those peer reviews back for the studies first. I think it's important that we're able to answer questions from the public um if we were to come up at the, at the public meeting. So I just want to hold off until we know the date that we're gonna have those uh peer reviews and make sure the public meeting is scheduled after that date.
So as direction, you're looking for committee to give you um the okay to go ahead and set a date uh without us picking that date or knowing that date? Yeah, to get it done quicker, right? All right, so moved already, good. Second. Cody, yeah. Um, okay, uh, further discussion? Anybody have any questions on this one?
So I mean, I'm glad we're here to look at the traffic because it does look concerning, right? When I did my eyeball count, you know, we're going from seventy-three houses if you go along that, that, but that's just to, to an extra two hundred and ten. So you're looking at basically, you know, three hundred percent of the traffic that they see today is almost happening there, right? So, you know, I mean, there's opportunities with the hillstream or something on the back to get time to, I think that was a prior discussion. Um, but, but in trying to figure out if we meet earlier than we know this, it means that, because I think we probably have a public meeting before we have just to have these conversations and having these discussions. I, I'd like to know the graphics and what's in this.
Will I come back to this committee again? It'll be a public meeting.
Uh, I'm not sure if we could.
The chapter's reports, the chapter report is just, is just uh conducted by a uh, a firmants has expertise in that, in that area, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so then it just becomes a sort of an objective report on what might or might not happen with regard to traffic, right? Is there any reason that, that, that report because it's, it's not the kind of a report that we're going to be able to change or adjust one way or another? We're gonna have opinions about it, but the public will also have opinions about it. So I don't see any problem if the public sees that report at the same time we uh, know it's circulated to us and have it available at the public meeting. Everybody can see it at the same time. It'll come to this committee for discussion after.
You might, you know, it will come, it will come back, that's correct.
It goes back to this committee. It doesn't always because this committee would um ask us to schedule a public meeting and then we have a public meeting and then there's um the next meeting of a council meeting. So it could get um reviewed and a decision could be made on it by town. If we bring it back to C B C, it would delay it for a while.
Well.
I mean, it's, I mean, it has been since two thousand and eight already. I mean, I'm not sure I'm, that's a big difference. I'm not sure kind of, kind of shovels in the ground, right? And, and then we're wondering, see, right?
Do we have that indication that the developer, it's my question actually, does that the developer has a, a plan of getting the shovel in the ground relatively quickly?
I don't, I don't know a date that the developer plans to start. The uh, the applicant, Xander, is on the call.
Mr. Mayor.
And one of the issues that I'd like to see this committee discuss is that this new um proposal is no single-family dwellings. So from a subdivision that started with forty-six, the single-family dwellings, we've then gone to a hundred and six units, which is a combination of single-family and duplexes. And then from there now to a hundred and forty-six units with no singletons. And uh, I would like to see, have, I would like to have some discussion at this committee about that because uh it just seems to be that, that uh, in one of the planning notes that I read, there was sort of a, a reference to the fact that final decisions hadn't been made uh about single-family dwellings. And, and that there was some sort of um, um thin edge there that, that might be open. And um, if it's at all possible for the proposal, for the proponent to incorporate into his plan uh, some of these blocks having single-family dwellings with what are now being called additional residential units attached to them or incorporated in them uh as affordable housing units. I would like to see that concept um discussed and evaluated and brought forward um, at least for discussion at this committee level. So I'm kind of hoping that there's room for some movement here before the public meeting.
So let's uh, let's, maybe I see Tracy's turned her camera on uh and is probably looking to weigh in on this one. So uh, Tracy, yeah, you're gonna come off mute and uh, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you well.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, yeah, I appreciate the call, the councillor's comments. If you look at the subdivision concept plan that's, I think, attached to the staff report, the Nova Tech report, those blocks. So when we designed the blocks, we did contemplate kind of the maximum um that could be achieved on those blocks in ser- in terms of semis and towns. But we also contemplated that they could be divided up using part lot control under the Planning Act into single detached dwellings. So we wanted to kind of show the maximum density so that when the traffic analysis was done, it considered, uh, I'm gonna say kind of the worst case or the most density that could be achieved, but also wanted to give uh the Lockwood developer some flexibility to, to have a mix of singles, semis and/or towns on the site. So any of these blocks in the plan uh could be developed with single detached dwellings. So there's, the flexibility's definitely in there for singles. Uh, and the question, the comment about affordable housing, so we have had this discussion quite extensively with county staff and with your planning consultants about how to, how to achieve the affordable housing targets that are in the twenty-twenty P P S and in the county's official plan. And we've talked about uh perhaps having a number of units that couldn't be over a certain square footage, which would inevitably lead to a lower cost uh price point. So uh, the affordable housing targets and um intentions in the P P S are very much on our radar. And we've been talking to the county and your staff and your consultants about how to implement that. So very much uh on our radar, yeah.
Question?
Yeah, sure.
So thanks very much, Tracy. You know, I appreciate the fact that uh, that your one forty-six is the maximum and that's what the traffic study is gonna be based on. Won't get any worse than that. Uh, but my question, and the reason I'm asking the question is because, as you know, there's long discussions going on at county, county level about uh affordable housing. So my question is, is it? And I, and I want to talk about additional residential units. Is it not possible for the developer to create a, a building concept which has a single owner? But the main part of the building, let's say the fifteen hundred square feet, is the main residential unit. And then the smaller residential unit or the additional residential unit, separate and sent, separate services, et cetera, is conceived as a rental unit uh, which would help the, the original owner with his mortgage payments. Uh, and, and so you get a combination of uh, single-family residential with small additional residential unit um incorporated into it at construction time. Um, has the developer given any thought to that kind of uh development on maybe five or six of these blocks?
So I haven't spoken to Mr. Lockwood directly about doing that, but certainly that kind of intensification through secondary dwelling units in existing dwellings is, a- as I'm sure you know, uh, more and more encouraged in the provincial policy statement and the other directives from the province. And I think your policies do allow that. So that's ob- obviously a way to. And I think your policies do allow that. So that's ob- obviously a way to uh increase rental units and affordable housing units. Within your community. So like I said, I haven't talked directly to Mr. Lockwood about doing that, but I do think the potential is there for those extra units, definitely.
And can I proceed with person? Push one step further.
Sure.
Okay, uh, uh, with the chairs in buildings, thanks very much. One other, one concept that I'm not entirely certain about, and I don't know whether you know the answer to this. But if I'm the owner of such one of those buildings and uh, and it's fifteen hundred square feet is my main res- my main residential area. And there's a small nine hundred square foot additional residential unit which I'm gonna rent out. Does that rental unit become subject to the landlord tenant act? If in other words, if I have the tenant from hell in there, he's basically in my house. Can I get him out? Do you know whether he's covered?
I, it, my opinion is I believe that any rental unit that you have in your home or in an apartment building is. Is definitely subject to landlord tenant act. That's my understanding. So I would say yes.
There is a concept someplace that rental units built after a certain date are not subject to that rent. Uh, whether it's maybe it's not, maybe it's not the act, it might be rent control. But anyway, I'll drop that issue. It's a side issue, Mr. Chair.
Let me come back. Can you for?
Sure, you go ahead.
So did I, and it maybe because like up to page hundred and thirty or so. Crazy eyes, I don't know. Did I read somewhere that the property to the north of this is also owned by the same applicant? Um, because I'm trying to read that up because that also feeds into my traffic conversation. Because if that is another potential hundred and forty-six teams down the road. I'm really worried with the traffic in here as well. And the services.
Does he own the land to the north?
Uh, Mr. Chair, you asking me?
Sure.
Um, I think so. I'm not a hundred percent, cent, percent sure, but I think he does. And we have allowed for a block. I think it's. Block thirty-six uh as a future road connection, uh which I, I suppose whether Mr. Lockwood owns that land or not, that's still kind of good planning to. To allow for that future road connection. So we have contemplated that. I, I think he does own it.
Pretty sure. In front of this committee, I think, before.
And I guess all the more reason to try and make sure you have some feedback again before, before.
So uh, changing the, the, the uh. Land use to R three, correct? Just the, and basically just gives developer a lot more freedom to develop it. A little more, with a little more intensity.
Yeah, that's the application as well, yeah.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Uh, I think we've discussed it well. So uh, committee is in favor, yes. Uh, of, of giving staff uh direction to set an appropriate, you know, uh public meeting date. Even though we don't know the date, we're, we're good with that, folks. Yes, no, I think that's. Yes, a good one. We think we've got, we've got that. And uh, we would like to see it come back to us again, though, once the study's completed for. Uh, and if they have plans, you know, of development, I'd like to see it again. I think that's definitely just not a good bet as well.
Yes, through the chair, could, um, we could be open to seeing it again um before the public meeting. If the public were held in the middle of August and I had some additional information prepared for our August third meeting. Um, could be reviewed then?
Yeah, I can go on for a second. Okay, good. Thank you, Tracy. Have a good night.
You're welcome. Good night, everyone. Thanks.
Alright, and I think so. Yes. Sorry.
Through the chair, we have a mover and seconder.
Oh, I didn't call a question. No question. Alright, so uh, I will call the question. Uh, can you read the recommendation? Again, just for my.
Okay, um, that committee directs staff to schedule a public meeting for the purpose of giving the public an opportunity to make representations. In respect of the zoning by law amendment application and proposed amendments to the approved draft plan of subdivision received for the Meadowlands North subdivision. In accordance with the requirements of the planning act.
And we had a mover, I think it was, this for me and we had a second, sorry.
Through the chair, move by Mayor Seo and then second by Mr. O'Wick.
Okay, perfect, good. Thank you. And so then all in favor. Uh, under uh the work part, economic development, we do have an application for a C I P funding for. Uh, fourteen Spencer Street, which is Little Sisters. And Wendy.
Through the chair, um, owner, uh, Gina Seo has applied for some funding through the community improvement. Um, plan. Uh, she's requested funding under the facade and property improvement program. Um, for the repair or replacement of a portion of um some of the exterior wall um that was rotting. Uh, that leads to the uh rental units upstairs. Um, the project also includes weatherproofing, the sidewall and adding some colorful siding. Um, the only thing I would make committee aware of here, maybe not the only thing, but I just want me to be aware. That um, the project work has already started. In fact, they don't buy it. Say it looks quite near complete. Um, when I read the um. Uh, the requirements under the C I P. Um, just trying to find any notes here. In order to be eligible for any incentive program, continued in the Spencerville Community Improvement. A financial incentive program application form must be submitted to the township accepted and processed by the plan administrator prior to. Commencing any community improvement works. I was just surprised by this, um, by this uh scene in the, in the plan. It sounds like as long as she submitted her application before um starting the works, uh, it would be okay. And she, she did.
It was in before, the application was, was submitted before the work.
Uh, yeah, yeah. So um, she, uh, the, the maximum we're allowed on the property and facade um program is uh five thousand dollars. Um, but you're allowed ten thousand dollars under the entire plan, under the property facade improvement program. She has uh sixteen thirty-one.
Yeah, good.
Okay.
So uh, discussion. Get to a mover in a second, between John and Chris. Good. Um, uh, any comments? Cody?
One thing, uh, it'd be nice to see some of this money go to local contractors instead of one from Orleans.
Your comment. Your comment. Uh, anybody else? Uh. I, I wanna make a comment on this one. I, you know, um. E- exactly what a C I P is for. Uh, it's great to see Gina, you know, who's made it through. Uh, this past year and a half and trying to continue thriving uh and donating back and keeping working with her community. To the best of her ability. I, I think it's, it's a great example. Gina's a great example of what, uh, what the C I P is for. So, uh, with that said, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Somebody's gotta vote against you here. Uh, there's nothing under play. Uh, so we're on to number seven, which is inquiries and notices of motion. Uh, I will start. Is there uh inquiries or notices of motion?
Thank you. Um, first of all, um. Uh, I'd like to apologize for the staff and, and for the council yesterday for. Uh, participating in our uh vaccine at the ingredient center. I had a. Family matter that I had to deal with early in the afternoon. And so I apologize deeply to the staff and to the council. I know. Uh, went through a lot of work and it's very successful. And then especially like to apologize to councillor, can- councillor Hunter. He was a gentleman who set it up, guided it. And that's a good indication where. Counselor from the north can do something in the south and the south can do something in the north. So. I mean, great. Uh, again, I apologize deeply, circumstances. I just couldn't do anything about it. And uh, the second one is uh, I'd like to have the uh. Some input if we can help the Benson Memorial Park down in Cardinal. Um. A lady, uh, Janessa Ben Coffin, I guess is her name, has done a great, great job of, of supporting it. Uh, if we can, the township could help with the mulching, if she needs any extra topsoil, I wonder if we could help her out. Uh, we help in water and not uh, do the chair to the C O and garbage containers and so forth.
So we're through, uh, through, through the chair, I can certainly speak that we have uh placed a uh garbage receptacle there. Uh, I'm, I'm not aware of uh watering the, that area or not.
Could we maybe do that run when we're going through the town? To continue on watering those plants here down there? If we could, maybe we can.
We, we will, we will, yeah, we will, we will certainly follow up and uh either speak between ingredient ourselves to.
Is it our park or is it ingredient?
It, it is on ingredient land, property.
And third, but not last, uh, our next C D C meeting, I'm gonna be putting a motion through with a bylaw. Uh, it's gonna go something like this, uh permitting our beach trailers, et cetera. Uh, for the occasional accommodations of guests provided the dechat dwelling exists on the property. And I'll have zonings, like zoning R one, two, three and four, open space, agriculture, et cetera. Um, I will get some help from my clerk, I hope, to. Do the bylaw, yes. But this will be coming forward.
You'll be moving a motion.
I'll be moving a motion if I get a second on that. At the next meeting, and I will be bringing it up. Sorry. So, and we'll, I'll be bringing it up weekly.
You get a whole bunch.
Okay, uh, last but not least. How's our docs? Are all of our docs in down there? In the chair and the C O.
Uh, through, through the chair, I, I don't know off the top of my head. Uh, I, I will, I, I will.
Okay, sorry. Okay, could you follow up with that, please, sir? Thank you very much.
That's it, that's all. Got your laundry, laundry list done?
Okay.
Good. Uh, further to that, uh, inquiries or notices of motion.
I have an inquiry and, and, you know, I, I realize it's becoming, in some places, it's a bit of a hot, hot issue and, and. You know, I have some concerns, so I mean, I am gonna go with that right away. Um, but you know, I guess it would be an inquiry to see what data we have uh already and. We, you know, ideally have some information more about, you know, the, the necessity uh to um. Uh, to change our forward system to our, to an alert system. So I, I'm trying to figure out. Uh, where the mandate came from and what evidences were supporting this change. And until we have that, I'd really like to see if we can hold off. My inquiry slash leading into the motion potentially.
How do I deal with that?
Through the chair. It's in the hands of council. That matters, it's in the hands of council.
Voting on it, is it what?
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, uh, further to that.
Just to perhaps guide you, there is information out there. I just don't know what information you're looking for. Um, as far as general word system versus at art. There is, there is a tremendous amount of information out there that covers most of your concern.
So I agree. I mean, what I'm worried about, random, some of this stuff, you're, I mean, there's lots of data out there. You know, and, you know, I don't have the resources necessarily to pull all that data together, but, but I have seen instances where there's concern about what it does. You know, we talked with the north and the south months ago, and I don't wanna see us create a dividing line, you know, where we have lesser representation in our, in our north. Because the population, you know, may or may not, I mean, I don't think anybody in this room says we have the answer to it or has studied it. Can say for them within, within any certainty that, you know, every council here, every council that's yet to come down the road. Will be able to say, you know, I come from the south, but I represent the north as well. So, and that's my concern.
Yeah, I, I think, um. You know, from my standpoint, come back at it. And I don't wanna turn into a big debate, but for, for my, my, my comment back on that is that. When it's a general election, um, you know, when we talk north, south. Uh, I think it's a wonderful thing for, especially myself. I ran for deputy mayor so that I'd have to knock on every single door in the township, not just in one town. And um, it meant the world to me to be able to go all the way up to Tolden Ranch Road to go as far out as uh New Wexford. Frederick Street and then uh to my good neighbors Ray, Ray Riley, live at the far southeast of, of township. But uh, I certainly make every attempt to um, you know, do my job for the best of one, one township. Not just Spencerville, not just Hartle, not just Johnstown. And the thought that that um thought is out there that. Some of us only represent one area. We swear an oath when we take, when we take our positions on that first day. And that oath is to represent one township. It's not to represent Spencerville, only word one, it's to represent the entire township. No, 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 fair enough. But I, I mean, I've heard some things, you know, uh, as well. And I think it needs to be. Clear that we, we do, we all swear that's.
This is to that point, though, we introduced it essentially last, you know, committee. And there's really no agenda between now and there, right? Where this can be discussed openly before we're having to go on to the respect. And if we hadn't voted on, on, you know, not unanimously. At the last council, we didn't, we didn't have this discussion now.
Well, in fairness, it was introduced in February uh with a notice of motion, much, much like what was brought up tonight. Uh, it was mentioned, uh, at least in. Sorry.
Every month.
Yeah, right, that it would be coming forward. And then we had one night where there was an information session. Uh, that was on the agenda. It was fully put forward with positives and negatives so that uh, uh, council and committee could discuss it. Um, it was discussed and, and then it's moved on to council. It's, it's been a very. I know there's some thought that that isn't the process that happened, but if people look back, that is exactly the process that happened.
You know, I mean, and I didn't see other agenda, but I don't know what date that was.
Yes.
The, the discussion is outside the mandate.
Thank you. Yes, fair enough. Okay, so moving on, it will be uh for the end of month. Okay, uh, further. Well. The discussion, the discussion on words is over, Connor. So.
Well, I've been reminded it's my question or notice of inquiry. I'd like to stick up for democracy. We take years to change the official plan, which is built on the foundation of the current voting system.
Okay, Connor, I'm gonna stop you just for a sec. So it either has to be an inburn or, or a notice of that you're bringing your motion forward. I, I've already gone too far past in, in the discussion with, with us, so.
That's not the right way to do it. If you wanna do it the right way, have an open house, the way we're doing everything else.
Procedurely correct, which, which we're not doing right at the moment. And I'm trying.
Right way to do it. If you're talking about how people vote. It's voting, it's not one person's opinion or how it, it's voting, which is how everything else is founded upon. In the township that is able to pull together multiple wards with rules. We shouldn't be pushing it through. Like I said last meeting, I'm not one way or another, because I haven't heard it. Guarantee you ninety-eight percent of people haven't heard it or about it. That's what I am upset about, not whether it should be done or shouldn't be done. It just seems rushed.
Is there an inquiry, Connor?
Table it. Table it for three months and, and have an open house.
It's in the hands of council.
Well, that's not the right thing to say right now.
It's the only thing to say, Mr. Chairman.
It's not the right thing to say.
It's the only thing to say.
Change the democracy of our township.
Uh, my, your points are all taken. I, I appreciate them. Uh, if there's no inquiry or notice of motion, then.
Well, everyone's on notice, so.
I, so we are to question period and I do see that we have. Couple of people in the audience for question period, uh, reminding everyone that question period does relate back specifically to agenda items. Agenda items only. So, um, if I can go ahead, I will give the member of the press, Mr. Zay Jack, first go.
Hello?
Hi, Ron.
Hi, okay, good. I'm glad, glad you can hear me.
Thanks for sticking it out for so long.
Oh, that's very interesting. Absolutely. Um just wanted to uh clarify, um I guess you mentioned. In in the presentation about the um jobs challenge uh site. So uh Newmark is the company that's, if I'm right, adjudicating this process, deciding what the three, who the three winners will be?
Well, they're hired by the province to assist the province with the evaluations of the sites. They will make recommendations to the province.
Okay, so and and I'm assuming these pictures, these videos uh are are part of the process that every candidate will be submitting as this goes forward. And I wanted, do you have a timeline for when a decision is expected?
Absolutely. Actually, we don't. We just know that uh Newmark, the Newmark's objective. Is to have all of the submissions completed by, what was our date again?
July twenty third.
Our our date is July twenty third. Other applicants may have asked for extensions and been granted extensions. That's something we don't know. But Newmark's process is that, once they've received. Complete applications from everybody, they will evaluate them all, then they will do site visits. And then they will make their recommendations to the province. Now, when they make their recommendations to the province, I don't know whether they make it to the minister. To the cabinet, to the premier, I don't know how they, how that process gets handled. That's. That's the prob- that's the provincial process. What we're doing, what we're doing, so that you, so that you can understand why why we held this meeting tonight. We want to, we want to make sure that there are no surprises in our local communities. That our local communities know exactly what's going on and that they're supportive. Because the the larger amount of support that we can demonstrate that we've received. Has got to influence the Newmark decision. Because one of the big things that a site selector looks for when they're. Hire, when they're finding a site for a a major multimillion dollar investment is, where are the workers gonna live? So that's why we're so focused on residential and lifestyle throughout the United Counties. So we have to, we have to anticipate that the site selector is gonna ask himself that question. And we have to answer it before he asks.
Okay, um just to follow up, um interesting element here, you mentioned that the township is purchasing. That stretch of land which is owned by the uh by the province um with the plan of selling. You you mentioned on the east side of this farmland that you would sell off to uh recoup the cost. Now, you mentioned um the purchase price the province has put forward. And the amount that the township is willing to put forward, that there's a a gap between that. Um and I understand the sensitivity of the matter, but it may be indicate how wide that gap might be and whether. Um uh failure to agree, if you will, on a purchase price might influence Newmark's recommendation.
Well, I mean, that that's all political questions I can't answer, and all the two things are tied together. And uh I mean, let's face it, we have the, as a council, we have to be flexible here. And uh if it turns out that that uh, you know, it's a question of which comes first, the chicken or the egg? Do we get the ten thousand acres before we know whether we won the job site challenge? Or do we win the job site challenge before we purchase the ten thousand acres? I mean, it's, I I don't know how the politics are gonna unfold here. I can't, that that's lighted, I can't see that light at the end of the tunnel. We just have to go on with the process and see where it leads us.
Okay, I I'm assuming the job site challenge is not, there's no requirement that the municipality own the land being submitted as a candidate? That it could be a third party land in some other people's cases, for instance?
Yes, yeah, I'm sure there is in some, in some of our competitors' cases, yeah.
Okay, and in in these negotiations with the province for the purchase of the land, is there an end date or a target date for completing the transaction? Or is it contingent upon uh the outcome of the jobs challenge?
Yeah, no, no, there's no target date or end date. It's uh, it's very uh flexible. It's it's shadow boxing at best, I guess.
Okay, all right, good. I appreciate that. Look forward to uh seeing how this develops. Thanks, thanks very much.
Thanks for your interest. Thanks, Ron. Uh John and Heidi are both there. Anything, any questions in regard to the agenda that's presented tonight?
Through the chair, um Heidi Ward's already indicated that she has some questions up the screen.
Good. Okay, so then let's move local session, uh move towards enjoyment. Who wants to move? John move, Cody second, and all in favor?